Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll so that we can establish a quorum?
You have Councilmember Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Shenier.
Here.
And Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Thank you very much. Welcome to all the members of the public. We begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. DeVore, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please, Ryan? Thank you. We'd appreciate it. If all -- everyone would please rise.
I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome this evening. We have a number of very important matters on this afternoon's agenda, but let us begin with two presentations. The first is recognizing Robert and Tracy Brown. I'd like to turn this over to Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Robert, Tracy, you want to come up with the family?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'd like to introduce you to Robert and Tracy Brown and their three daughters, and introduce them to you and to the city of Sacramento. We have a lot of people in District Eight who are working very hard for our district. They employ over 50 barbers, stylists, educators, and support staff in South Sacramento. He is one of our largest employers in South Sacramento. Unfortunately, I have not had the opportunity to avail myself to your haircutting service.
[laughter]
But maybe one day. He's been an active member of the Mack Road Board of Directors, property improvement district. He served as the vice chair. He's the founder of Kickit, which was held at Burbank High School to provide weekend mentorship and enrichment activities to young African-American men. They've been in business for over 20 years. He has provided free haircuts to people in our district who could not afford it. He's served to guide our young people, keep them on the right path, and he's one of our stalwarts. He's one of the people that makes District Eight go and make the city of Sacramento go, and I wanted to recognize him and his family for their outstanding contributions for the last 20 years.
That's great.
Very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, first off, thank you guys for recognizing us for our hard work over the last 20-plus years. I have with me tonight my all-star team. This is my business partner, Tracy, my eldest daughter, Deja, Robin Brown, and Morgan. And I want to thank you guys for all your efforts. Like Mr. Larry Carr said, I've been on the Mack Road partnership for many years now. I've had a business in the south area salon for 20-plus years, and we have our beauty and barber college on Florin Road. And I just, again, thank you guys for all your efforts. Sometimes the south area gets a bad rap, and we have a lot of good people out there trying to do some things to help the young people and mentor -- give some mentorship. So, thanks again for recognizing us.
Thank you. Yep, of course.
Want to say something?
Just how appropriate and important it is that we recognize our small businesses in Sacramento, and people have built businesses from the ground up and are doing such a service for our community. And I'm just wondering, do you do consultations?
We sure do.
Okay.
Come on down.
Thank you. I may be in touch. Right, okay. Thank you. Good way to start the evening here. Thank you. Next, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Hanson for a presentation that recognizes Building Safety Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Winfried Delion, our chief building official, to come up, and I see Ryan DeVore and some of the other team here. Thanks for coming to support. May is always Building Safety Month, but also every month is Building Safety Month when it comes to the city of Sacramento. And, Winfried, you and your team do a phenomenal job helping to keep people safe, to protect lives, and I just know because we've worked with you on some dangerous building issues that from the buildings -- from the construction side to the day-to-day issues, you do a phenomenal job, as well as your whole team. And I'd like you to -- I'd like to present you with this for your commitment and your team's commitment to safety and excellence.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, city manager, we appreciate this recognition. Our team does work hard to make things as smooth as possible for our customers and make sure our buildings are safe. We have a couple of outreach events happening this month, one at the Home Depot on Trucksville, and we'll have a meet-and-greet in the middle of the month at our location at Richards. So, we are trying to expand our, I guess, exposure to our citizens. So, thank you.
Clearly, the fire department, too, and the fire marshal, I don't see him here, but I see our chief and some of our other staff do a phenomenal job. Right now, there's a trial going on in Oakland related to the Ghost Ship building that burned down, and many people lost their lives, and I think that is the reason why we want you to continue, along with the fire department, to do a great job to prevent the loss of life, but also to maintain our excellent safety record. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward, Steve. Dino. We have the consent calendar, but I know Councilmember Ashby, I'd like to do this out of the top.
Would that be okay, Mayor?
Of course.
Great, thank you.
Wanted to pull an item off. Yes.
So, we have a super short consent calendar. This is item number 44, that I'd like to take out of order, if that would be okay with my colleagues.
Can I just, before you do, just to see if there's anything that's been continued for the record, et cetera, et cetera?
Sure, any of that, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Can we pull it and have a separate?
We're gonna do that, and I want to do that first, but I just want to...
I have one speaker on item 33, and then I have something to read into the record on item 40.
Why don't you do that now?
Perfect.
Okay. Read into the record.
So, on item 40, the red line salary schedule on page 70 of item 40, the staff aide TMP maximum hourly rate is 110.862264 instead of 110.86.
I appreciate you clearing that up.
Thank you. Crystal.
Yes. Okay. So, now, before we take the one witness on item 33, let's go right to the very important item that Councilmember Ashby wanted to raise. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very important item to me and to the city, and I know to all of you, but there are a number of people here in the audience who are here for this item. If you could put that picture up for us, Mindy, that would be great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Maybe scoot that down just a little. Rivka, would you mind coming up to the podium here for just a minute and helping me out with this presentation? So, this beautiful soul you see in front of you, whose shirt says "The Future Is Accessible", is Amber Clark, and she, besides being really gorgeous, is really, really smart and served as the librarian for the North Natomas branch for a while, and unfortunately, we lost her. We lost her to a tragic, senseless killing, and it was terrible, but tonight, we want to honor her life, and we want to talk a little bit about how amazing she was and what her tremendous contributions were to Natomas, to the library system, and to our community. And Rivka, of course, runs our library, and so she and I decided some things we wanted to do in honor of Amber, but I'd also just like you to see how many people are here in the room for Amber. First of all, Amber's husband, Kelly, is here. Kelly, would you stand up for just a second? That's Kelly Clark. He's also a librarian, as, you know, that's how it works. And the friends of the North Natomas branch are here. Would you guys stand up, too? These guys helped make this possible. They are really amazing and do great work. Thank you. And I think there are some folks from the library here as well. Are there some folks from the library system, Rivka?
I think they're on their way, and they're late.
Their way over. And I don't yet see Dan Mothersbaugh. There he is. Okay. This is the principal for Endercombe High School. Mr. Mothersbaugh, would you stand up, too? This is a partner for Amber. Dan Mothersbaugh runs Endercombe, and the North Natomas Library is on the same site as Endercombe High School, so these two work together. So, when you are the librarian in North Natomas, you deal with a lot of kids. The kids from the high school come through. It is the biggest component of that library and something that Amber really loved. There is another picture there. Yeah, that one. Would you put that up? No? This is Amber on a day where we were accepting a bunch of books for reading for the kids, and we took these in, and then the library gave them away. And she's helped spearhead this effort, and they specifically chose North Natomas in part because of the friends and in part because of the number of families and children that participate in reading programs. And then, not that one, but the other one. Thank you. This is my favorite picture of her because she's wearing her Love Natomas shirt, and she was really ready to be a partner in the community, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that later, but Amber was down to be a part of what's going on at the school or my office or anything that was happening to make Natomas better, and this is sort of her -- this is her literally wearing it on her sleeve to talk about it. So, tonight, we're gonna take an official action, and hopefully, you all will support it, and this is item 44, and we're going to name the teen room, which is the significant portion of the North Natomas Library, after Amber, in her honor. And that will be tremendous for her, and that's not all we're gonna do. So, there is an artist here. Would the folks from the arts community that are here stand up? I think there's two of you here. Jody, will you stand up, too? These two, go ahead. These two are going to help us honor her another way. We are going to commission an art piece. Neil, would you put up that other thing? This is one of his art pieces already, and we're gonna do something similar to that. That's Amber on the end on the right there with some of the library staff and me, enjoying an interactive art piece, and we're gonna recreate that but better, right? Yep, and we're gonna permanently place that in the North Natomas Library in honor of her as well. And then, Rivka, would you talk about the third component of how we're going to honor Amber with her memorial fund and accessibility?
Oh, yes. And so, Kelly has established a scholarship working with -- actually, is it all right if Kelly comes up?
Bring him up.
I know, Kelly.
Much better.
Thank you, Rivka. I, in addition to the library's efforts for the accessibility program, I've established a scholarship for -- through the Sacramento Region Community Foundation. In Amber's honor, it's the Amber Fawn Wooten Clark Memorial Scholarship, which will benefit an Endercombe High School graduating senior dedicated to pursuing a degree in education to become a teacher, because that was Amber's first career and passion.
It's amazing. Did you know that, Principal Mothersbaugh? Pretty cool, right? So, I'd love to read this to you and to the folks that are here. This is the recognition I'm going to give to you today, Kelly, for Amber, and it says for her service and contributions. Amber was first a high school English teacher and later became a librarian for the Sacramento Public Library, where she became a leading advocate for people with disabilities. In March of 2018, Amber was promoted and transferred to North Natomas, where she made the library patrons feel welcome. The North Natomas branch is known for its student and family focus, as it shares a campus with local Endercombe High School and American River College. Amber quickly became a partner with the schools, the city council office, and the community at large as she worked to serve the surrounding neighborhoods. Tonight, in honor of her life, the Sacramento City Council will join the Sacramento Public Library in officially naming the teen space at the North Natomas Library after Amber. Let's get the whole thing. Amber Fawn Wooten Clark. Her extended family really likes that. I call her Amber Clark, but Amber Fawn Wooten Clark is the full official name there. And I just, I have one other piece to this, but would either of you like to say anything here in honor of Amber or this effort, or to the friends, or Principal Mothersbaugh?
Well, for starters, I'm extraordinarily proud and humbled. Obviously, I'd rather this not be named and she still be here, but I'm extraordinarily proud and humbled, and I'm grateful for all of the assistance that I've received from everyone, including the city of Sacramento, the Sacramento Public Library, and every other agency that's helped me along the way.
Kelly is an extraordinary man. Mayor, you went to the memorial service. I smile every time I see him because he's so funny, and they had this great quirky relationship that's full of fun stories, and whenever I see you, I just think of all those great stories and how many games of Scrabble you guys must have played and had a great time with. So, far too short of a life, but certainly don't feel bad a life well, well-lived for Amber and for Kelly. So, if you guys would -- one other piece to this, and then I'm gonna give you that, and we'll take a picture, if that would be okay?
Yes, of course. I just really want to thank our city clerk, Mindy, and James Christensen from City Facilities, because I didn't really know what the process was, and I wanted -- I didn't want to just blindside you. I know how busy you are, and thank you, and James was great, and it's all happening a whole lot faster than we thought it would, and I really appreciate.
We're gonna have a party out at the library when we put up the plaque, right, you guys?
Yes, absolutely.
And we'll make sure everybody knows about that if you want to come up to that.
And again, you know, library staff, we're all still sort of reckoning with this and dealing with it, and it's -- I'm amazed at how emotional it is for us to be up, for me personally, to be up here, and I want to thank all of you for your tremendous support as we move forward and do this really, truly wonderful thing.
And we won't stop there. We'll finish with our other things, too, and it will be a year of celebration as we unravel each one of those things, and we'll just keep going together, okay? All right, Mayor, with your indulgence, one other component to this. Rivka and Kelly, if you would hang out for just a second, you can sit down wherever. Officer Fontana, would you come forward, please, for just a moment? So, obviously, we lost Amber in the most tragic of ways, and this night is about celebrating her life, but I couldn't also pass the opportunity to just tell you all, the part that I can tell you about this incredible investigation, because the person who committed this egregious crime was in custody within 12 hours of doing this, and there's one reason why, and it is Officer Fontana. He wasn't even on duty in Natomas when the call came in, but because he works in Natomas and is a community-oriented police officer, meaning that's his focus, which is a testament to the chief back there, Daniel Hahn, he already knew Amber, and so, when he heard the name, he knew exactly who that was. He had been a good partner to her and to me and to my office, and because of his focus on community and his acknowledgement of Natomas as a tight-knit community, he stepped in, and he had critical information, and that information led to an arrest before morning time, and as a result, swift, very swift justice. And while it doesn't bring Amber back, it does set a community at ease and give way for some peace and healing and for us to celebrate moving forward and doing fun things like naming rights and artwork and supporting kids. So, on behalf of everyone in Natomas, I just wanted to recognize you, too, Officer Fontana, and this is a certificate to you that also says that thanks to your commitment to community policing and your tremendous work ethic, you brought justice in less than 24 hours, which your lieutenant promptly reminded me was only 12 hours, to a heartbreaking tragedy and the senseless loss of a community hero, our librarian, Amber Fawn Wooten Clark. So, I'd like to give this to you as well. Mayor, and if you or any of the other council colleagues would like to come in.
I want to thank you. Beautifully done. I mean, I just, there's some tragedies that are so unspeakable, and but what you're doing here is you're saying that all that Amber did and contributed around literacy, around library, around community, that her legacy needs to live on, and that's what you're doing here, and so, I appreciate it. And Kelly, I just, awed as I was the day of service with your strength and your dignity. I just don't know how you do it. Thank you.
Yeah, Kelly's amazing. If we could maybe have the friends and the folks who are here today, Mr. Mothersbaugh, come forward, and we'll take a picture with the mayor and the council. Why don't we go down here? Would you guys be okay with that? I think that would be great.
Do you want to stall?
Yeah, just let's all come down. We'll move that thing.
I'll come down.
Yeah. I have. Have you want to come help us take this picture?
Thank you. Next, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Hanson for a presentation that recognizes Building Safety Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Winfried Delion, our chief building official, to come up, and I see Ryan DeVore and some of the other team here. Thanks for coming to support. May is always Building Safety Month, but also every month is Building Safety Month when it comes to the city of Sacramento. And, Winfried, you and your team do a phenomenal job helping to keep people safe, to protect lives, and I just know because we've worked with you on some dangerous building issues that from the buildings, from the construction side to the day-to-day issues, you do a phenomenal job, as well as your whole team, and I'd like you to -- I'd like to present you with this for your commitment and your team's commitment to safety and excellence.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, city manager, we appreciate this recognition. Our team does work hard to make things as smooth as possible for our customers and make sure our buildings are safe. We have a couple of outreach events happening this month, one at the Home Depot on Trucksville, and we'll have a meet-and-greet in the middle of the month at our location at Richards. So, we are trying to expand our, I guess, exposure to our citizens. So, thank you.
Clearly, the fire department, too, and the fire marshal, I don't see him here, but I see our chief and some of our other staff do a phenomenal job. Right now, there's a trial going on in Oakland related to the Ghost Ship building that burned down, and many people lost their lives, and I think that is the reason why we want you to continue, along with the fire department, to do a great job to prevent the loss of life, but also to maintain our excellent safety record. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward, Steve. Dino. All right. We have the consent calendar, but I know Councilmember Ashby, I'd like to do this out of the top.
Would that be okay, Mayor?
Of course. Wanted to pull an item off.
So, we have a super short consent calendar. This is item number 44, that I'd like to take out of order, if that would be okay with my colleagues.
Can I just, before you do, just to see if there's anything that's been continued for the record, et cetera, et cetera?
Sure, any of that, yeah.
You know what I mean?
We're gonna do that, and I want to do that first, but I just want to...
I have one speaker on item 33, and then I have something to read into the record on item 40.
Why don't you do that now?
Perfect.
Okay. Read into the record.
So, on item 40, the red line salary schedule on page 70 of item 40, the staff aide TMP maximum hourly rate is 110.862264 instead of 110.86.
I appreciate you clearing that up.
Thank you. Crystal.
Yes. Okay. So, now, before we take the one witness on item 33, let's go right to the very important item that Councilmember Ashby wanted to raise. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very important item to me and to the city, and I know to all of you, but there are a number of people here in the audience who are here for this item. If you could put that picture up for us, Mindy, that would be great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Maybe scoot that down just a little. Rivka, would you mind coming up to the podium here for just a minute and helping me out with this presentation? So, this beautiful soul you see in front of you, whose shirt says "The Future Is Accessible", is Amber Clark, and she, besides being really gorgeous, is really, really smart and served as the librarian for the North Natomas branch for a while, and unfortunately, we lost her. We lost her to a tragic, senseless killing, and it was terrible, but tonight, we want to honor her life, and we want to talk a little bit about how amazing she was and what her tremendous contributions were to Natomas, to the library system, and to our community. And Rivka, of course, runs our library, and so she and I decided some things we wanted to do in honor of Amber, but I'd also just like you to see how many people are here in the room for Amber. First of all, Amber's husband, Kelly, is here. Kelly, would you stand up for just a second? That's Kelly Clark. He's also a librarian, as, you know, that's how it works. And the friends of the North Natomas branch are here. Would you guys stand up, too? These guys helped make this possible. They are really amazing and do great work. Thank you. And I think there are some folks from the library here as well. Are there some folks from the library system, Rivka?
I think they're on their way, and they're late.
Their way over. And I don't yet see Dan Mothersbaugh. There he is. Okay. This is the principal for Endercombe High School. Mr. Mothersbaugh, would you stand up, too? This is a partner for Amber. Dan Mothersbaugh runs Endercombe, and the North Natomas Library is on the same site as Endercombe High School, so these two work together. So, when you are the librarian in North Natomas, you deal with a lot of kids. The kids from the high school come through. It is the biggest component of that library and something that Amber really loved. There is another picture there. Yeah, that one. Would you put that up? No? This is Amber on a day where we were accepting a bunch of books for reading for the kids, and we took these in, and then the library gave them away. And she's helped spearhead this effort, and they specifically chose North Natomas in part because of the friends and in part because of the number of families and children that participate in reading programs. And then, not that one, but the other one. Thank you. This is my favorite picture of her because she's wearing her Love Natomas shirt, and she was really ready to be a partner in the community, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that later, but Amber was down to be a part of what's going on at the school or my office or anything that was happening to make Natomas better, and this is sort of her, this is her literally wearing it on her sleeve to talk about it. So, tonight, we're gonna take an official action, and hopefully, you all will support it, and this is item 44, and we're going to name the teen room, which is the significant portion of the North Natomas Library, after Amber, in her honor. And that will be tremendous for her, and that's not all we're gonna do. So, there is an artist here. Would the folks from the arts community that are here stand up? I think there's two of you here. Jody, will you stand up, too? These two, go ahead. These two are going to help us honor her another way. We are going to commission an art piece. Neil, would you put up that other thing? This is one of his art pieces already, and we're gonna do something similar to that. That's Amber on the end on the right there with some of the library staff and me, enjoying an interactive art piece, and we're gonna recreate that but better, right? Yep, and we're gonna permanently place that in the North Natomas Library in honor of her as well. And then, Rivka, would you talk about the third component of how we're going to honor Amber with her memorial fund and accessibility?
Oh, yes. And so, Kelly has established a scholarship working with, actually, is it all right if Kelly comes up?
Bring him up.
I know, Kelly.
That's much better.
Thank you, Rivka. I, in addition to the library's efforts for the accessibility program, I've established a scholarship for, through the Sacramento Region Community Foundation. In Amber's honor, it's the Amber Fawn Wooten Clark Memorial Scholarship, which will benefit an Endercombe High School graduating senior dedicated to pursuing a degree in education to become a teacher, because that was Amber's first career and passion.
It's amazing. Did you know that, Principal Mothersbaugh? Pretty cool, right? So, I'd love to read this to you and to the folks that are here. This is the recognition I'm going to give to you today, Kelly, for Amber, and it says for her service and contributions. Amber was first a high school English teacher and later became a librarian for the Sacramento Public Library, where she became a leading advocate for people with disabilities. In March of 2018, Amber was promoted and transferred to North Natomas, where she made the library patrons feel welcome. The North Natomas branch is known for its student and family focus, as it shares a campus with local Endercombe High School and American River College. Amber quickly became a partner with the schools, the city council office, and the community at large as she worked to serve the surrounding neighborhoods. Tonight, in honor of her life, the Sacramento City Council will join the Sacramento Public Library in officially naming the teen space at the North Natomas Library after Amber. Let's get the whole thing. Amber Fawn Wooten Clark. Her extended family really likes that. I call her Amber Clark, but Amber Fawn Wooten Clark is the full official name there, and I just, I have one other piece to this, but would either of you like to say anything here in honor of Amber or this effort, or to the friends, or Principal Mothersbaugh?
Well, for starters, I'm extraordinarily proud and humbled. Obviously, I'd rather this not be named and she still be here, but I'm extraordinarily proud and humbled, and I'm grateful for all of the assistance that I've received from everyone, including the city of Sacramento, the Sacramento Public Library, and every other agency that's helped me along the way.
Kelly is an extraordinary man. Mayor, you went to the memorial service. I smile every time I see him because he's so funny, and they had this great quirky relationship that's full of fun stories, and whenever I see you, I just think of all those great stories and how many games of Scrabble you guys must have played and had a great time with. So, far too short of a life, but certainly don't feel bad a life well, well-lived for Amber and for Kelly. So, if you guys would, one other piece to this, and then I'm gonna give you that, and we'll take a picture, if that would be okay?
Of one thing, of course. I just really want to thank our city clerk, Mindy, and James Christensen from City Facilities, because I didn't really know what the process was, and I wanted, I didn't want to just blindside you. I know how busy you are, and thank you, and James was great, and it's all happening a whole lot faster than we thought it would, and I really appreciate it.
We're gonna have a party out at the library when we put up the plaque, right, you guys?
Yes, absolutely.
And we'll make sure everybody knows about that if you want to come up to that.
And again, you know, library staff, we're all still sort of reckoning with this and dealing with it, and it's, I'm amazed at how emotional it is for us to be up, for me personally, to be up here, and I want to thank all of you for your tremendous support as we move forward and do this really, truly wonderful thing.
And we won't stop there. We'll finish with our other things, too, and it will be a year of celebration as we unravel each one of those things, and we'll just keep going together, okay? All right, Mayor, with your indulgence, one other component to this. Rivka and Kelly, if you would hang out for just a second, you can sit down wherever. Officer Fontana, would you come forward, please, for just a moment? So, obviously, we lost Amber in the most tragic of ways, and this night is about celebrating her life, but I couldn't also pass the opportunity to just tell you all, the part that I can tell you about this incredible investigation, because the person who committed this egregious crime was in custody within 12 hours of doing this, and there's one reason why, and it is Officer Fontana. He wasn't even on duty in Natomas when the call came in, but because he works in Natomas and is a community-oriented police officer, meaning that's his focus, which is a testament to the chief back there, Daniel Hahn, he already knew Amber, and so, when he heard the name, he knew exactly who that was. He had been a good partner to her and to me and to my office, and because of his focus on community and his acknowledgement of Natomas as a tight-knit community, he stepped in, and he had critical information, and that information led to an arrest before morning time, and as a result, swift, very swift justice. And while it doesn't bring Amber back, it does set a community at ease and give way for some peace and healing and for us to celebrate moving forward and doing fun things like naming rights and artwork and supporting kids. So, on behalf of everyone in Natomas, I just wanted to recognize you, too, Officer Fontana, and this is a certificate to you that also says that thanks to your commitment to community policing and your tremendous work ethic, you brought justice in less than 24 hours, which your lieutenant promptly reminded me was only 12 hours, to a heartbreaking tragedy and the senseless loss of a community hero, our librarian, Amber Fawn Wooten Clark. So, I'd like to give this to you as well. Mayor, and if you or any of the other council colleagues would like to come in.
I want to thank you. Beautifully done. I mean, I just, there's some tragedies that are so unspeakable, and but what you're doing here is you're saying that all that Amber did and contributed around literacy, around library, around community, that her legacy needs to live on, and that's what you're doing here, and so, I appreciate it. And Kelly, I just, awed as I was the day of service with your strength and your dignity. I just don't know how you do it. Thank you.
Yeah, Kelly's amazing. If we could maybe have the friends and the folks who are here today, Mr. Mothersbaugh, come forward, and we'll take a picture with the mayor and the council. Why don't we go down here? Would you guys be okay with that? I think that would be great.
Do you want to stall?
Yeah, just let's all come down. We'll move that thing.
I'll come down, sure.
Yeah. I have. Have you want to come help us take this picture?
Thank you. Is that okay? Is that okay? I'll take it. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Do you want us to...
Yes. Yes. What's your one picture? Everyone get tight. One, two. No, I don't think on this there's any speak. Okay, Mayor, I'd like to formally make a motion to move item 44 forward, officially naming the teen space at the North Natomas Library, the Amber Fawn Wooten Clark Teen Room.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained? That's unanimous vote of the city council. Appropriate. Thank you. Thank you to everyone. All right. Let us take the public testimony on the remainder of the consent calendar. There are two people, correct?
Correct. I have two speakers. The first is Mac Worthy on item one, then Will Kennedy on item 33. Mr. Worthy?
You all can figure that out. Who did you invest in and how much you invest in and what is the return? That's the bottom line. Be transparency. That's supposed to be taxpayers' money. All the stuff about transparency, and you can't tell us what you invest in and how much you invest in and what is the return. You can lie on everything else, but you can't lie on figures, so talk to the folks. I'm gonna keep bringing it up, time after time, and I got the time to come down. I'm still, that's me, and I'm keep waiting for Donald Trump's thing, that whole and Emark money. Just a bit of information about the Office of Public Safety Accountability. The mission, the overall mission of OPSA is to improve the relationship between the public safety departments and the community. And that's done by giving the community a place to lodge misconduct complaints separate from the public safety departments they wish to make those complaints about. It also provides independent oversight of misconduct complaint investigations, as well as making policy and procedure recommendations where warranted. In 1998, the city manager convened a Blue Ribbon Committee to basically deal with the pursuit policies of the police department and to also look at the complaint intake process. In 1999, Mayor and Council established the Office of Police Accountability. In 2004, due to some misconduct with the fire department, that office duties were expanded to also include the fire department misconduct complaint process. And in 2016, Council moved an ordinance to change the reporting structure of OPSA, as well as adding some staff to the office, and I appreciate that very much. For misconduct complaints for calendar year 2018, when it comes to the police department, there were a total of 335 complaint allegations. OPSA received 102, and Sacramento Police Department received 253 directly. One administrative investigation can have multiple allegations. There was a total of 46 allegations that were formally investigated and an additional 208 that were resolved without the need for formal investigation. This is a 3% increase in the amount of complaints made from the previous year. Here's a breakdown of the allegations made during this reporting period directly to SPD. The allegations with the highest number of complaints were conduct unbecoming, discourtesy, neglect, obduty, as well as service. There are five different dispositions that can be assigned to a complaint investigation. Each allegation will be given a disposition. Those dispositions are: sustained, which means the investigation clearly proved that the allegation occurred; not sustained, where the investigation failed to prove or disprove the allegation; exonerated, the allegation or the alleged action occurred but did not violate policy; or unfounded, the alleged act did not occur at all. There's also one other category, which is reclassed to informal, and this occurs when the complaint can be handled by a supervisor outside of Internal Affairs Division. On the current chart, you can see that there's a breakdown of this, the dispositions of the 46 allegations that were formally investigated. Those allegations were attributed to 19 employees. There were 29 other allegations still under investigation at the time that this reporting period closed.
Can I ask you a quick clarity question on the previous slide?
Yeah.
Are any of these overlapping? In other words, neglect of duty and conduct unbecoming, are those all, are those separate individuals, or some of them the same individual with two-
So the way that I break down my numbers for reporting purposes is that I only count it once per employee that is accused. So you could have one employee that has one case, but there may be five different allegations within that case. So I report every single allegation that the employee is accused of. So if you see, there's no overlapping. So where it has, like, let's say neglect of duty, three of those allegations were exonerated. Another two were not sustained, and the other nine were sustained cases. So each one of those would be attributed to at least one employee. Does that answer your question, kind of?
Yes.
Not really?
Go ahead. They're unduplicated, yes.
Okay.
Yep, I got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So this slide shows the discipline that was imposed for the SPD cases that were completed in 2018. There were 11 completed investigations during that time. During 2018, the Sacramento Police Department had four critical incidents. A critical incident is identified as an officer-involved shooting or death in custody. Occasionally, OPSA may provide recommendations to the police department surrounding these events. Some of these recommendations were in conjunction with changes already been made by the Sacramento Police Department. Officers responded to a report of a vehicle property damage that escalated to home property damage. After a short pursuit, the individual was shot when officers mistook his cell phone for a gun. Post-incident, there were numerous changes made by the Sacramento Police Department. Some of those included updated body-worn camera policy, development of a foot pursuit policy, prompt release of video footage associated with the critical incident, and updated and ongoing changes made to the use of force policy. In addition to those positive steps already taken by the Sacramento Police Department, OPSA would recommend that the police department develop a response or tactical approach that could allow officers to assess individual, injured individuals with minimal delay. For the next incident that happened on June 6th of 2018, an officer with the Sacramento Police Department was driving a patrol wagon and was contacted by patrol agents, or sorry, parole agents, and asked to assist by transporting the man in their custody to the Sacramento County Jail. The officers had, the officer had been monitoring the man on a video monitoring screen inside the driver compartment of the transport van. Due to concerns about the man, the officer checked on him as he pulled into the jail entryway. The officer quickly discovered the man was in medical distress. Medical aid was provided, however, the man died at the hospital. During the investigation of this incident, the police department became aware that the camera system inside of the transport van was not recording. It had the ability to view but not record. OPSA recommends that the police department establish a schedule to periodically check recording devices and camera systems. This will help build trust and ensure necessary transparency during critical incidents. On the critical incident on July 31st, a SAC PD officer was checking businesses located where several individuals were loitering in the parking lot in a South Sacramento business area. A computer check revealed that one of the individuals had an outstanding felony Nobel warrant, so the officer handcuffed him and placed him in the backseat of the patrol car while attempting to confirm the validity of the warrant. Within a short period of time, the man began to shake and appeared to be in medical distress. The officer requested medical aid. The man was transported by the Sacramento Fire Department, but later died at the hospital. OPSA recommends that the police department add a training component to their academy and ongoing training to help, especially help new officers recognize signs of controlled substance ingestion and overdose. This would assist officers in recognizing when someone is in true medical emergency versus feigning illness. The critical incident that happened on September 6th, 2018, the Sacramento Police Department responded to a call regarding a man with a gun threatening numerous people. A patrol officer saw the man jump the fence, still armed with a handgun. A perimeter was set up and SWAT was called in to conduct the search. SWAT officers located the man and ordered him to drop his weapon, but according to the officers, he pointed his gun at an officer and was shot and died at the scene. Through the investigation, the police department became aware that the placement of body-worn camera equipment was inadvertently being stopped by the stock of the rifle. OPSA recommends reviewing body-worn camera placement of each police assignment to determine whether specialty equipment may inadvertently affect the functionality of the camera system. And I'm going to move on to fire, unless you guys, okay, perfect. So this chart is a breakdown of the total complaints received against the Sacramento Fire Department personnel over the last four years. There were 86 complaints made, a 35% increase from 2017 to 2018. OPSA is currently working with fire management to determine the cause of the spike in complaints. The cause is not yet known. This chart shows the type of complaints that were made against fire employees. There were a total of 179 allegations included in the 86 complaints previously mentioned. The highest number of allegations were attributed to discourtesy and service. The disposition of the completed investigations is explained on this slide. And that basically concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Council, thank you. Councilmember Carr has some questions.
Thank you, Francine. Thank you for the report. How helpful are the body cameras in determining, making a disposition on something like disrespect or discourtesy?
So, as I previously pointed out, there was a very large number of complaint allegations that I mentioned were handled at the lower level with the supervisor. The body worn cameras, when they're used, obviously depict what you can see of the incident. So it is extremely helpful, especially with dealing with complainants, to bring them back in after the fact. Sometimes they're given the opportunity to sit with IIA investigators and go over the incident to explain their version of it, and quite often, the complainants will say, "Oh, you know what? That's not how I remembered it." Or, "That's a little bit different than I recall." And it can have that issue be resolved at a lower level than going through the whole process of the Internal Affairs Investigation. So I would say they're very helpful.
So they can actually look at the video?
Yes.
And recall what they saw versus what the video. We have a high number of discourtesy complaints with the fire department?
Yes.
And by the cameras. How are you able to substantiate?
Well, being that I've done this for, I'm going on, I think, my 13th year now, all of these incidents where we get complaints typically deal with someone in a very extreme level of stress, or they're at a low point, whether it be medically or dealing with some type of, you know, process dealing with the police or the fire department. So you have heightened emotions. With the fire department, I think that there are a lot of questions that are asked that are medically driven, and just trying to help the firefighters work on some of the bedside manners when someone, they're trying to get to an answer, and the person may be trying to explain a little bit more than is needed for the answer that the fire department wants. So just helping to massage the situations when you can is helpful. But, like I mentioned, because the emotions involved and the situation, there's a lot of, just validity, or it's volatile.
If you don't have the tape of what happened, how can you determine what happened?
So we have to rely, when it comes to the fire department, we have to rely, who is in earshot? What type of witnesses are present? Were there other family members that heard the alleged comment? And we just go off of that. That's why you'll see a higher number of not sustains in the fire investigation field, because you can't prove it one way or the other.
So Francine, you and I have talked about this before. The system that we've set up is designed to receive complaints.
Yes.
But we don't get the other half of the story. We don't get the kudos when we have a very successful encounter. We don't have a way for our citizens to report that we have a successful encounter. Consequently, we're just seeing negative incidents where people feel that they have been treated unfairly. Can we set up a system where we can get the kudos?
I believe that the department has their own mechanism to receive that, and typically it would happen by way of either the dispatch receiving the call and, or somebody telling the officer or asking for a supervisor to follow up and just letting the supervisor know. Typically, they don't come to my office. I may get one or two commendations a year, as opposed to the numerous complaints, but it is the Office of Accountability. So I think most people skip that part on the website and just go directly to the agency that they want to give the commendation to.
Do police have a system set up where they can receive kudos?
Yes.
We're getting just one half of this situation with over 500,000 residents. We see that we have 200 or 300 people who are not satisfied with the service that they received, and we have no way to balance that against the people who are satisfied, so we can determine as a council if we have an issue.
Right.
So I think we need a system where we can let people who have successful encounters with our police department, either through traffic stops, arrests, at the park days where police come out and talk to kids. We need some way to measure, to balance these unsuccessful encounters against the successful encounters.
Kind of like a survey or a follow-up to a contact?
Yes. We will talk about it more along with our city auditors, too.
Okay.
I know, you know, for example, this week, the chief and his team put out a press release around an incident. I've seen this now several times over the last several weeks, where the police peacefully diffused an incident involving someone obviously suffering from a severe mental illness. And so, and, you know, I tweeted it out. I mean, we need to, I think we have some opportunities through our own connections, our social media accounts and everything, to take those stories and make sure that we, that we get them out there.
Yeah, I see those, too. And plus, the police routinely put out the community events that officers attend.
Right.
But because we're looking at the negative encounters, perhaps, we don't have an opportunity to see in a holistic way the positive encounters. So as a council, it's difficult for us to balance.
Councilman Carr, I'll ask our fire chief to work with Francine to come up with some options to get the good news out as well.
For both police and fire.
Good. Very good. Councilman, thank you, Councilman Carr. Councilmember Hanson.
Well, I just want to follow up on that. And Francine, while you have all these numbers, I would like to just give a couple personal stories where constituents have contacted me and we forwarded a complaint to your office. I have been so impressed by how quickly you and your team kind of cycle back around and try to figure out what happened and resolve it. And I think that feedback loop and that customer service gives those people confidence that even in sometimes the instances where it's unsubstantiated, or maybe the evidence is unclear, that they've been heard by somebody impartial and that they've been given a chance to sort of have their opportunity for review. Recently, it was actually a little over a week ago, a complaint came forward about someone being pulled over, and it turned out to be outside of the city by a non, it wasn't our Sacramento PD and it wasn't the county sheriff. But your office went above and beyond to help figure out where it was, how it happened. And when these things start on social media, they spiral. And somebody says, "I was pulled over and it's the city's fault," we don't really know where it happened, how it happened. But within, I would say, less than 24 hours, you and your staff had looked through our dispatch logs, you'd looked through all of the computer evidence, you'd figured out it wasn't us, it wasn't the Sheriff's Department, and identified the likely agency. And I think that, when that feedback came to the, to the public, was a critical piece of how we maintain the trust and confidence that my colleague was just talking about. And so, I just want to thank you and your team. As we've developed this piece, along with the commission and the department's own efforts, I think it's critical that we continue to do what you're doing, and you've been a wonderful leader for the OPSA.
I appreciate that, and I would actually be-
People don't hear about that stuff.
I, thank you. And I would actually be very remiss to not mention, I was trying to be super brief, but the police department makes all that possible. So I always say that 90%, 95% of what I deal with is, is negative, but, you know, the people who I deal with on my day-to-day dealings, all the information you mentioned, I had to work with somebody at the police department, pulling them off of the job that they were on to get that done. And I think they see the importance of continuing to build that relationship and making those things happen with the community through my office. So I do want to thank the police department, as well as the fire department, for all the work that they do to make my job a little bit easier and more productive.
Chief Hans in the back. Thank you, Chief. He nodded.
Thank you. Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I agree with Councilmember Carr that we don't tell our success story as well. And to do that, we do need some data, you know, to show the level of customer satisfaction citywide. We approach it through the community survey that the auditor puts out, but maybe there is a more concentrated way we can do that. You know, I personally feel that our police department and our fire department are excellent and provide very professional service, but of course, there are incidents, and you take care of those. I agree with Councilmember Hanson as well, that you do it with great aplomb and efficiency. I really liked your explanation about fire department. You know, I've spent 34 hours on ride-alongs with FD, and anecdotally, everything that I've seen has been very professional treatment, but- But you're right, those are moments of stress. Almost all the calls are medical calls, and, you know, the people that they're attending to are in a world of hurt, generally speaking. So it does kind of skew the situation. But I know that we've got to do a little bit better at telling our story, because overall, I think it's immensely positive. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
I agree. It's a very tough job. I mean, you do it very, very well. And we appreciate the report, but more than that, the daily and weekly interactions that we have to often deal informally, to diffuse, you know, difficult situations and to talk through how we can all get better together.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate all of your support as well.
Thank you. We do have one testimony, one item of testimony here. Go ahead.
I have one speaker on the side, and Macworthy.
Why people don't come down here and voice their opinion. What I have seen over the years in this city is critical, and it come from the city council and mayor by pinning the police department against the general public. To the cameras, when that camera put a voice on it, you would have solved that shooting down in South Sacramento. It hadn't a voice. You heard nothing the police said at the time of chase. When a dog chase a rabbit, he barks, doesn't he? So understand those things. And when we look at the fire department, those young men is underpaid. And you go all the way to Philadelphia to bring somebody in here. What are you trying to do? It's ridiculous, people. And the dispatch talks too much. Blah, 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 blah. You say you got a scene, you got a cop on it, and get it on and get to it. Same thing to the fire department. Let him on the phone, and he in that truck, he know what grade the fire is, and he know what he need there. And when we look at the training at the police department, it was sad to see $900,000 spent here. Mayor, how much that money went to John Barnes? You cannot train no police for no 40 hours to identify familial. Few weeks ago, you had both hospitals in here. Why didn't you have them in here then and talk? Because you don't want that. Because you depend on grants and bonds. Let the police department start talking. No, you don't want that. You got some men on there can talk, and some men on that see thing, but no, you don't want them to step up for themselves to protect yourself out there. Police department, you gonna have to step up to them, put them yourself. That's bottom line. Not go through a merry-go-round and this and that. So wake up, police department, you got a union. You got some good men on there.
Okay. Is this a rece, is this a motion required? No, receipt.
Thank you.
Thank you very much again, Ms. Turnhour. Okay, let us now move to item 47, which is the proposed budget overview and funding options for inclusive economic development. I promise you, I don't have a lengthy opening here, but I do want to make a couple of opening comments, just to frame the discussion, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Holman, her staff, the city treasurer, and the city attorney. This is a follow-up to our Budget and Audit Committee meeting two weeks ago. And of course, the Budget and Audit Committee sits as a committee of the whole, and so we agreed, the city manager and I, that we didn't want to just replicate exactly what essentially the full council heard two weeks ago. So tonight, I'm looking to discuss two separate pieces of very important feedback, if you will, and report back from the meeting two weeks ago. And of course, beyond the two items that I would like to discuss, members are, of course, free to raise anything else. There is a lengthy budget schedule that will include all of the departments over the next several weeks, as well as member, so-called member priorities, which are very important. All of that will be agendized and scheduled. But for tonight, I would like to discuss two things. One is the question of bonding and the creation of a capital fund for job creation, for housing, for workforce training, and for neighborhood investments. Secondly, I would like to get feedback and have a discussion about our goal, my goal, to fund economic development beyond the capital component on an ongoing basis. I'd like to hear from the council tonight, I know the city manager would like to hear from the city council tonight, to get feedback and to provide some direction. Very briefly, in February, in my State of the City address, I asked that the city council consider setting aside $40 million a year for five years for economic equity or inclusive economic development, to invest in neighborhoods and to grow our economy and our tax base. I want to explore that with you here tonight. Secondly, I asked that we develop a bonding strategy so that we can build a capital fund, not just for, not just and not at all, for my projects, but for projects in infrastructure throughout your districts that, again, address job growth, blight, infrastructure, affordable housing, and youth development. I want tonight to start with a staff presentation on the bonding idea, and then have a community and a council discussion about our overall strategy. On the bonding, and this is the last thing I want to say, because it is important in terms of the context, in discussions with the treasurer and with some of my colleagues, I have amended my own original approach, and will ask the treasurer to discuss a strategy that only commits resources for a capital fund incrementally, a year at a time, over three to five years. An approach that would maintain council control to approve any additional bonding decisions year to year, and would only authorize bonding as specific projects are identified and approved by the city council. That's the amended approach that I would like to have us discuss tonight. So, Ms. Holm, it is yours, and then, I don't know in what order exactly, but I know that the city attorney-
Come behind, Don.
Would come behind, Don. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, I'm Don Holm, Director of Finance. The proposed budget was released on April 24th and is balanced totaling $1.2 billion from all funding sources, and includes $32.7 million in augmentation recommendations, $23.5 million in the general and Measure U funds. These augmentations address council priorities we have discussed over the past year, and will provide resources for inclusive economic development, youth, public safety, homeless services, and essential core services. The detailed report provided on April 30th is included as attachment one to this report. During the Budget and Audit Committee meeting-
I'm on the phone.
Oh, so, I didn't. What happened?
Sorry.
At the April 30th meeting, staff was asked to provide council with additional resources to fund inclusive economic development initiatives. In addition to the almost $52 million in one-time resources identified in the proposed budget, staff is recommending that council consider directing one-time and ongoing resources available in the Innovation and Growth Fund, as well as any available year-end resources to this initiative. Further, as requested by the committee, we have separated the general and Measure U fund forecasts, creating a base budget for each fund. The base budget funds the services, programs, and staff that we have today, starting July 1st. As a reminder, these forecasts do not include future labor increases that may be negotiated. As it is difficult to project this much information, we've provided copies at the back of the room for members of the public. As we have discussed previously, employee costs exceeding revenues in Measure U fund totaling $10 million annually since fiscal year 16 have been transferred to the general fund. This, in addition to increasing operating costs, will result in annual expenditures in excess of revenues beginning next fiscal year. Below the estimated base budget surplus deficit line, we have layered in augmentations included in the proposed budget. One-time resources in the amount of $26.6 million in fiscal year 20 year-end resources from fiscal year 2018-19, and reserves previously set aside for pension growth and approved labor agreements. The Measure U forecast has been prepared in the same manner. This forecast reflects the base budget for Measure U, including $22.7 million in year-over-year expenditure growth for existing programs and services, and the $6.7 million approved at mid-year. $19.7 million in augmentations is included in the proposed budget, which includes $3.5 million in one-time expenditures. I'd now like to turn this over to the city attorney.
Thank you. Who is next? I'm sorry. Madam City Attorney, yes. Okay.
Yes, Mayor and Council, at your March, excuse me, your April 30th Budget and Audit Committee meeting, the question came up whether or not the proposal by the mayor for the use of the Measure U funds to repay debt on lease revenue bonds was legal. I advise the council that I would get together with my colleague, the city treasurer, and review it, and we determined that, yes, that it would be legal. The city has in fact done this before. The examples are set out here on the slide of lease revenue debt paid from the general fund, city master lease program, city master equipment lease program, Golden One Center.
Good. Thank you. All right, Mr. Colville?
Thank you, Susanna. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. At last week's Budget and Audit Committee, the mayor introduced an idea to bond a portion of Measure U revenues to create a fund for inclusive economic investment. At that time, he asked the city treasurer to do an analysis to determine what such a bonding would look like and what kind of projected project funds could be achieved. The city attorney presented, "We could accomplish this, we could accomplish this using a lease revenue structure." So this is informational only for you. This slide shows the estimate of the range of possible outcomes of $5 million slices of annual debt service increments, given a council-approved list of associated projects. So for initial $5 million, you're looking at anywhere from $82 to $88 million, depending on what your taxable versus tax exempt mixture is. $10 million, you're looking at 164 to 176, and so on and so forth. Are there any questions on this slide? Because this is important.
Maybe, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, just, thanks, John. I just think it's important that these are cumulative numbers, right? So that this is adding, from $5 to $10 million, this is adding, if we went year to year, this is adding $5 million per year.
No, it's for an initial, so if we did $5 million the first year, you'd look at 82 to 86.
Right.
The following, if we did another five year, the following, $5 million the following year, you look in that same range, depending on what interest rates were.
That's what Jay's saying.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, so I just wanted-
But if you did $10 million, it's not exactly double, so that's why.
No, I understand that. But this would be year by year increasing our debt service at these levels. The total amount, if we did $5 million a year increases for five years, the total amount would be your 411 to 440.
Yes.
In there. You don't add the 82 to 400.
No, it's not.
And I just want everybody to be clear on that.
Under this structure, John, every year, the city council at budget time or any other point would have the opportunity to change course, if you will, and revisit this, because this is being done incrementally over the course of three to five years, correct?
Exactly, sir. Like I told you, like many conversations you and I have had, there would have to be council-approved projects to facilitate us moving forward with issuing debt.
Can I make a point of clarification? We're not bonding against Measure U funds. We're bonding against city assets.
City assets. Yeah, that's what the next slide will show.
Using the Measure U fund at $5 million first year, or second year, $10 million the third year to pay it back.
Is general fund money, so whatever.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this slide identifies the time and cost associated with the creation of a second master lease program. We've already done a master lease program beginning in 1999 and revisit it again in 2015. So it's, there's some history there. Initially, the treasurer office with the city real estate division will identify a list of city assets that could be used for collateral for this program. So we need to collateralize the bonds. These assets would mostly include the remaining fire stations. I believe there's two that aren't encumbered now from the master lease program, parks, and, most importantly, the convention center when it's completed. Once the assets are chosen, real estate will engage in appraisal process of the properties with costs between $200 and $250,000 and take four to six months to complete the appraisals. The Inclusive Economic Community Development Investment Committee, with the work with the city manager's office, will then recommend projects to the council for approval for this program. Once the list of projects and financing structures are approved, once again, needs to be approved by your council, the projects and the bond issuance, the treasurer office will issue a master lease revenue bonds, and that'll take four to six months to deliver. So conservatively, we're looking at the beginning of next fiscal year if this is a program you folks choose to pursue.
John, if I could be clear about one other thing, I'm making an assumption here, and I think this is a question more for the mayor, is that on all of these projects, we've also set up this process with our investment committee and our Measure U advisory committee. So it's not just a project coming to the council.
Absolutely.
They would run through the process that we're setting up.
Right. That's why I indicated in-
Absolutely.
With some measurable outcomes.
The investment committee and the advisory committee, to put it bluntly, will have nothing to do if we don't provide the resources for them to be able to help us prioritize. But the key point, I just want to clarify in addition to what Jay just said, is under this approach, nobody's taking $25 million off the table, so to speak, in year one or year two even, or year three.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Thank you. Are there questions from members on this, on this issue? On the, yes, Jeff?
Yeah, so, you know, what we're essentially doing here, if we pursue this path, is taking on debt. And as projects are proposed, there would certainly have to be substantial analysis about when we might get some return on the investment to pay that debt service. It would not, I think, be a good program to pursue if there were projects that did not help pay the debt service ultimately, because we will dwindle our Measure U money, you know, in the general fund. Is that a fair statement?
I would agree with that, yes. That's part of the mayor's foundation of doing inclusive economic, that he wants to have return on his investment.
Well, I mean, that's the whole idea, to do projects to build the economy, to start bringing tax revenue back to the city.
It is, but investing in our neighborhoods is an important discussion. Not every project is going to have a quote, is not, not every project is going to make a profit. Let me give you an example. I know, Councilmember Harris, you are passionate about Site's Reservoir. Talk about it all the time, and I think it's a very good project. Site's Reservoir would be funded by the 2014 general obligation water bond that the state taxpayers are going to pay for. Now-
Partially.
Partially. When the state makes that investment, it, what it expects is better water supply reliability and better conservation for the people of California. It does not expect a profit. Just as like when we invest in any major neighborhood infrastructure project, we're not making a profit, we're improving the community. And so, I just think it's important, conceptually, in terms of what I'm talking about, so I can be clear. I'm not talking about a profit-making enterprise. I'm talking about an affordable housing trust fund. I'm talking about being able to invest in Stockton Boulevard and Del Paso Boulevard and the, and the Del Paso Library, and the Martin Luther King Library, and other economic engines that provide a public benefit, that partner with the private sector wherever possible to be able to create jobs and build wealth. But this is not, the idea of return on investment needs to be seen from a public interest point of view, not just a private profit, because we're a city, we're not a, we're not a hedge fund.
So understood, and those are, of course, goals that we pursue all the time. You know, we make investments in our communities in many ways, in infrastructure, in roads, and, you know, everything we do as a city, I think, is an investment in the health and well-being of the city and for our constituents. But, you know, with anything, whenever you make an investment, you have to be able to pay the debt-
Of course you do.
-that you incur. And so, John, I wanted to ask you, if we do this incrementally, you know, if we do pursue this path, we have to be very mindful about where we go by taking on debt service at this point. From my point of view, we have pretty substantial debt in the city already, and although these goals are things that we need to achieve, we also have to be mindful of a potential downturn in the economy and what that would do. You know, that's why when we did the TOT bond sales, I asked you then for a reasonable margin of safety so- margin of safety, so that we don't come up short like we did in the last recession. We've been now 10 years of expansion in the economy. It's unprecedented, by two full years. At some point, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna feel the stress of a downturn in the economy, and I think it's very important that we keep the discussion alive about how much debt is realistic to take on, especially if, Mr. Mayor, we invest in projects that uplift the community and create community benefits, but don't actually bring a return for, to pay debt service. Eventually, we could just run out of money, and essentially, what we're doing here is mortgaging assets that the city holds, real estate assets, to sell bonds. That's the collateral we're putting up.
Correct.
You know, we've done it before, it can be done, and, and I get that, we're not breaking new ground here. I'm just saying that, you know, a very substantial margin of caution is indicated, because we're looking at an economic downturn before too long.
Yeah, Jeff, my, my perspective's not going to change from the TOT, where I find I stress-test the heck out of this to make sure that we have available reserves. I mean, I'll work with the budget group and Howard's team to decide when they forecast a budget, that we can afford this, and we can afford a recession, if, if the event of this comes to fruition.
Councilman?
My mindset is definitely on that.
Mr. Hanson, do you have some questions to get? I think what we're gonna do is, just clarify, we're gonna take public testimony, then we'll go around, because I do want to hear from all the council members, please.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I was gonna say, I'm gonna reserve my comments on the proposal, but I want to clarify a couple of things. One is, I know that it's buried in a budget book, but, John, can you walk us through our debt service schedule? Because partially, in the out-years, we see some bonds coming off, and, and I don't, that's not in your presentation, I don't have my book here.
I do have a slide.
You have a slide?
Yes.
I know it's a little wonky. I know it's a little wonky, but I think it is helpful for kind of understanding the granular detail. Yeah, that's good. I'm just gonna enlarge it. Madam Clerk, can you zoom in, please? So, if I read, can you slide it over just a little bit, John? I'm sorry.
Yes.
So it looks like, right now, general fund obligation, once we get to essentially FY22, there is some capacity that's currently not available in this budget year, and then it continues to drop as those bonds, I'm guessing from the early 90s, when the mayor may have first come here, those are the bonds that are coming off, is that right?
Yes.
And are those?
I know the 2000s.
Ooh!
Not 1992, 92?
Tough.
I was in, never mind.
We're gonna see a big drop in 2036, that's when the 2015 refunding bonds were done, that built this building and, and did a lot of the 911 call centers. So that's where you're gonna see the major.
And if I remember right, these bonds that are coming off in the next three fiscal years are related to parking garages and stuff like that, is that?
I have to refer to Brian. I believe so, and then, and some of it is the convention center bonds that are coming due.
Oh, okay, from the old?
At least from the last time they renovated it.
We're not refinancing those as part of?
No, those are $8 million.
And those aren't, the, the building is not used as collateral in those?
It, it is once, until those bonds come off. They come off in fall of '20, I believe. We've got a reserve fund for the spring and fall payment, we just have to have, accumulate one more payment for this fall of '19. So they are collateral for that loan, that loan, on those bonds, but those bonds come off the books in the fall of 2020.
And then, that's very helpful. I think this, especially if you could provide a little bit more of the granular detail to us as we debate this, I imagine we're not making a final decision tonight, but this will come back.
No, no. Just direction.
Through the process, so it'll be good to have more detail there. The other thing is, I know, under the leadership of the council over the last six years, we've seen our credit rating go up. Do you have an understanding if we added bond debt in the way that's being discussed, if we mortgage these assets, how the credit markets will look at the city of Sacramento's debt?
It will not change it. We had Goldman Sachs look at our current bond ratings and take into fact the intake of the new Measure U money. And the, the new 50 million a year wouldn't help our credit, because we still fall within, they do what's called a score sheet, and they have a range of, depending on your liquidity or your tier of, of assets. So the additional money won't increase our credit rating, and bonding against that won't decrease it. We're kind of in the sweet spot where we, we really aren't gonna move at all.
Okay.
Mr. Hanson, I'd start to interrupt, just for clarification, in our five-year forecast, we have taken into account the retirement of these bonds.
Okay. So, does that mean that the revenues that return to the general fund that are released from debt service are being relied upon in your budget and shouldn't be considered as part of our discussion here?
It's a, it's a reduction in the expense.
Okay. We'll come back to that during other comments. One, one more question for now is, well, maybe two. Is there an appropriate model? When the banks came out of the recession and sort of the fiscal economic crisis, they were put by the Federal Reserve through the stress test kind of model to see how they would weather significant downturns or other crises. Is there a model we can use here to sort of evaluate the city's fiscal health over the next five to 10 years, to evaluate our ability to withstand whether it's a mild or severe recession, or some of the other headwinds that we know are out there?
We just had our credit rating looked at, and they look, they're a forward-looking group, and they have affirmed our current credit rating with a stable outlook. So they're, they're looking ahead, and with the diversification of this.
I guess that's different than a stress test, isn't it?
Well, they, they will not, they will identify risks associated with our current, but they're, they're realizing that the risks are diminishing a little bit, because our economy's diversifying, we're not so government-heavy. Our asset value's gone up for, for our total assets within the city, so, they haven't done a stress test, but they do, it's part of their analysis to look forward and, and inject any kind of downplays into the, into the, in the market, and they've said that we come back at stable.
So I guess, as, as, as you continue down that line, and we'll hear what everybody else has to say, but I would like to see a more official public stress test done by somebody independent to look at.
I could have a financial analyst.
What, what we, what we would do in some of these scenarios. And I think, you know, there's enough flexibility to kind of look at different models. The last thing, and Mayor, because you brought up the libraries and Stockton Boulevard and all that other stuff, one of the questions I have is, you know, Station 10 in Eric's district, it has some advocates who say it needs to be rebuilt to improve coverage there, but is a fire engine part of your economic engine plan?
Engine?
Station. You know, because we do have these areas that are served corely by some of our city assets, and, you know, I'm trying to understand what you mean by inclusive economic development. We just got the staff report 24 hours ago, basically. This is a very big decision, and it's atypical of how we generally look at this stuff, because normally, and we had this conversation about the destination fund, usually, we see the projects first and have them vetted, and then we choose what to do with them. Here, we're being asked to sort of do it in reverse, and so it's really, a lot of people are assuming various things are gonna happen or not happen, but it's, it's really hard to tell what's, what's going on.
Well.
So I'm just, I, I don't have much clarity.
You know, and as I explained two weeks ago, not to digress, but if we don't begin setting direction now, there won't be any money left in a year, or at most, two years, to be able to even have the discussion. So, the idea is to set direction, but as Mr. Colville lays out, and as I have indicated in terms of my evolved thinking, the idea is not to take $25 million off the table now, establish a $400 million trust fund, and then decide on the projects. The idea is that you'd provide the authorization, but you wouldn't bond a dime until you actually have the projects. And in terms of the definition of inclusive economic development, other members raised this last time, that's, I, I'm open, by the way, I'm open, that's, but that's for us to discuss. But the timing of this is very important for the reasons I described a couple of weeks ago. There, there's a big whoosh, the money will be gone, i- if we're not strategic about saying what it is we want, not immediately, but over the long term. So that's the difference in terms of the, in, in terms of the urgency of the moment. But when you look at this again, Mr. Colville's presentation, you get to make, as a council member, a decision to set this up now, you get to make a decision, a separate decision a year from now, you get to make a separate decision two years from now, three years from now, four years from now, and you get to decide which projects are, meet the definition and should be funded by this capital fund. I can't think of more flexibility, while at the same time, pointing the city in a direction that I believe that the people, the people want. That's the timing issue.
I'll save my other questions for you for later, but those are my questions of the staff.
Councilman Carr, did you have a question now? Because we want to.
A clarification on this.
Yeah, clarification.
Could you put the bar chart back up? Along the lines of what Councilmember Hanson was asking, so, what's our total capacity for debt?
I don't have a. Speak English. That's a great question. It depends on what our revenue streams are that's gonna cover it.
And what collateral?
Because revenue increases, our capacity for debt increases.
And what collateral we have to back it up?
Excuse me?
And what collateral we have to back it up?
The collateral we have is, what the mayor's anticipating, is using additional Measure U funds, and using city assets as a lease-backed collateral. Does that make sense?
So, is?
The properties that we would encumber.
Is there such a thing as debt-to-equity ratio in cities, or assets-to-l liabilities in cities?
There's debt per, per populace, per individual, and we're on the low end of that relative to much of the state. I can provide you with that information, I don't have it at hand, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Let us hear now from members of the public, and then we will turn it over to the council members for comment.
I have seven speakers on this item. The first is Roberto Padilla, Chris Andrew, then Amanda Blackwood.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Roberto Padilla, Sacramento Firefighters Local 522. In November of 2018, our community approved an increase to the existing Measure U tax from a half cent to a full cent. Sacramento residents voted on the following ballot question. Shall the measure to protect and enhance essential public safety services, including 911 response, fire protection, community neighborhood policing, and other essential services, including homelessness-supported services, affordable housing, libraries, parks, maintenance, high-wage, high-wage job promotion, and youth programming, be enacted? A one-cent sales tax generating $95 million annually that is legally required to stay in the city's general fund until ended by voters with independent annual financial audits and citizens oversight be adopted. That was a question. Thank you.
Mr. Padilla, can I ask you a question or two, please?
Go ahead, Mayor.
I appreciate it. You're aware that the city's manag, city manager's budget includes millions of dollars of proposed investments in fire service, correct?
I understand that, Mayor. Right now, my point was just to bring up what was brought up to the voters.
I know what your point was, I just want to ask you some questions.
I understand. I may not have the answer, though.
No, no, but you're, you're, the, the city manager's putting $3.5 million in capital spending to replace fire stations, existing, at least partly with Councilmember Hanson, what he asked, 2.5 million for trucks, engines, and other vehicles, 1.2 million to fund 25 recruits and four captains at the Recruit Academy, $796,000 for three additional battalion chiefs, and $134,000 for a public information officer. You support, I assume that 522 supports those expenditures, correct?
That is something that I do not speak in behalf of full 522.
Mr. Andrew, do you want to come on up? Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we're doing our, our public speaking now, I didn't know this was an interrogation. We don't support the manager, we support the manager's budget and the direction he wants to head, as we do every budget. We do think there needs to be some changes in the amount of money that funds the fire department, it's not enough.
Okay. Are, are these expenditures a significant step in the right direction, the millions of dollars that I just recited?
They, they are a step in the right direction.
Okay. And if the council were to approve these expenditures as part of the budget, you would be pleased, correct? Wouldn't you?
That would be a step in the right direction.
Okay, good, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for answering the questions. Go ahead. Next.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to say that a couple of weeks ago, we had some comments about a direction that the, the council should be going. Now, we've had more discussion tonight, I actually really don't have any idea what we're doing now, because it's been so mumbled and so confusing, the discussion tonight, just on the bonding. I think if we were gonna, if this was the direction that the city wanted to go, that the residents wanted to go, we would have been, began discussing this maybe in January, February, so we had some months to discuss, discuss it. Right now, we have a budget, many, many millions of dollars to discuss. We have three to four weeks, June 11th is our date, to get that done, and we're throwing another curveball out that we're gonna try to figure out. The curveball that's already changed from two weeks ago to the new curveball. I think that, I want to make it clear, I sent a letter to all the council last week that Sacramento Firefighters is in full opposition to this plan. This is not what the voters voted for. I understand your promises, Mayor, I understand what you said, but you also set this up so that they would push this through. I believe, and we believe, that the voters had no choice but to push this through, because it was all or nothing. It was 1% or nothing. And we are now in this situation where we're doing a curveball at the last minute and trying to talk about a very complicated subject, as I think Councilmember Hanson said, and, and we don't have any time to do that. It's very disappointing that this direction that we, we should have been able to work on since, I would say, November 8th or 6th, or whatever day it was, since the Measure U was approved, we're not talking about it. So we can get into the weeds of what the priorities are of the council, but the reality is, this money needs to stay in the general fund, needs to be voted on by the council each year, and decided on what we want to do with it, just like we do every other year. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amanda Blackwood, then Cassandra Jennings.
Hello, thank you so much. I'm Amanda Blackwood, President and CEO of the Sacramento Metro Chamber of Commerce. We want to say that while we understand the business community was one of the first to come in support of this, and it was, it's difficult, it's difficult to get the business community behind any kind of tax, and so why did we do that? And so we very much believed that, when we look at the economics of our region, and we look at where we're going over the next five, 10 years, that it's absolutely essential that we put investment into our communities that does increase our tax base overall. So I want to point out that the essential city services are absolutely important, that we completely respect that, and at the same time, we have to make investment in our people, and we have to make investment in our businesses, so that we ultimately are sustainable. When we look at our local economy, it's very heavily reliant upon healthcare, government services, and then it's all kind of, it's professional services, small business, restaurants. All of those people need discretionary income to be able to participate, so when we look at these kind of investments in our community and in small business, particularly those communities that have not had that opportunity, it is a step in the right direction for long-term resiliency, and we have to be able to build capacity. I would say, please consider, as we make these investments, we acknowledge and appreciate the incremental way of looking at accumulating debt. As a, as a business owner myself, as an operator of business association, we look at, at taking on debt very, very seriously, and I appreciate the approach to do that in a, in a stepped way, but we absolutely have to look at the ROI on the investments that we make, from the community side, from the long-term side, so that our, our economy is resilient through the downturns. We don't have that resiliency now, and it's really scary to think about our next five, 10 years, if we continue to do what we're doing, our community will not be able to sustain itself. So we know a recession's on the rise, and these investments in economic development are essential from a moral standpoint, as well as an economic standpoint.
Mayor, may I ask Amanda a question?
Yes, of course.
Sorry, ma'am, I tried to catch you bef, and I'm sorry, ma'am, I tried to catch her before she walked away. Amanda, I just have a couple of questions for you.
Of course.
And it's okay if you don't have the answer, just tell me you don't, because I didn't get a chance to talk to you beforehand. Have you had a chance to look at the city manager's proposal specific to the proposal specific to the economic development teams that he's proposing? He put together with planning, development, and an economic development person that would work in each of the communities where we're trying to bolster and advance our economies as per this council's discussion over the previous years? Have you looked at that model?
I'm, I'm aware of the model.
And how do you feel about that model? Do you think that's effective, or do you think that's a good idea? Do you think it's a good investment to streamline planning and development on the city's standpoint and, and use an econ, add to our economic development department to work with the businesses that are already in place and recruit more?
Right. I, I think this. I think we have finite resources and we can't do all of the things.
Correct.
And so, I believe that the appropriate response is going to be a mix, right? There's, there have got to be things that support the community, libraries and parks and retaining talent and, and having healthy people. There have got to be, there's got to be support to, at the city level so that you have the capacity that you have to do your jobs. I mean, it's very difficult, and I think sometimes it's, the, the general population may feel that the city has more resources than it has, or that there are more bodies doing the work than there necessarily are. So, I think it is a blend, and if we are truly using a model and the investment fund is doing this work and the citizens' commission is doing this work and under your leadership, that we're evaluating those investments as they go, that may be the right way. I don't know the economic impact of that strategy, but it makes sense.
Okay. And then, thank you. That makes sense. I appreciate your comments. Then the, just second quick question is, when we talk about, and I think this gets a little bit lost, I know the mayor and everyone up here gets it, but when we talk about bonding, you really, it limits what you can use the money on. You wouldn't bond and then spend it on programs. If you bond, you have to spend it on, you know, infrastructure. So, how do you see creating that bonding capacity as an asset for the types of businesses that you just discussed? Because we wouldn't be able to go in and do economic development in the traditional sense of like workforce development or businesses that are already in place that we would be helping them advance. So, how would we use bonding capacity to help invest in businesses, in your mind?
Capital.
So, are you saying that the bonding funds would not be as flexible as perhaps...
For sure. Right. When you look at just funding right now, it's, it's flexible. When you use bonded funds, there's restrictions to how that money can be used. Maybe Don could for two second, or John, whichever one of you wants to chime in on the restrictions on bonded funds, but what they can be used for might help. I think that's a piece of this conversation that has, is missing because people see it as an amplification. Oh, we'll bond, then we'll just have more money, but there would be limits on what we could do.
The only limits would be imposed whether you use taxable or tax exempt. If you use tax exempt monies, you'd have to spend the money down within three years, and you wouldn't be able, you, you wouldn't be able to have more than 10% in private versus public.
No, the point is, what can you use the money on?
You can use the money on anything.
You could pay for any program you want.
But it just doesn't make sense to do a pop-up with this money when you're going to pay for it for 30 years.
So, is it a, so is it a good idea to bond and use funding for program that doesn't generate funds? Or better, normally when we bond, we're doing it to build a structure or a building or use infrastructure.
And I think that's what the mayor's, yeah, for capital.
It is what the mayor's saying. I just want to make sure everybody else is understanding that. So, we would be limited when we look at these projects, that they have to somehow increase our bonding capacity or create an opportunity for us to renew. We couldn't just bond and then use that money to pay for a program or do a bunch of giveaways. That wouldn't, it would be ill-advised, correct?
I totally agree. Right. I would not advise that.
Okay. All right. So, that's my question to you, Amanda, then. So, working inside of those parameters, how do you think we could use it?
Right. That is a great question. And I think strategically, to get, to get into the nuance of how the fund is put together is not my particular expertise.
Okay.
However, I do believe that you, you are able to strike an appropriate balance. So, you're able to invest in those things that, that are actively increasing the tax base and actively increasing revenue, also directly placing capital, directly investing in physical structures. And if you do that in such a way, you will build some capacity to do true community-oriented programming, workforce programming.
Structures.
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate that.
And you can do that in a balanced way.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Amanda. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Of course.
Our next speaker is Cassandra Jennings, then Tracy Siegler.
Good evening, mayor, members of city council. Cassandra Jennings, president and CEO of the Greater Sacramento Urban League. First, let me say that I'm certainly one of those, along with many of the nonprofits and community leaders and community out, that really walked to really support Measure U. And our interest was not only, it was partly into supporting city services and also thinking out of the box for inclusive economic development. I certainly support city services and in the budget, I really support what they will do to serve our communities. I'm also hopeful that there will be some innovation and creativity as we implement this budget and the budgets and as we plan for the future. And specifically about the inclusive economic development, I am in strong support of the incremental use of the bonding strategy that will allow us for planning and implementation for inclusive economic development. This incremental approach will help us, one, prevent unnecessary debt, and it does allow for a thoughtful and strategic approach to economic development. I wish I could say that all the projects are planned now and we know what they are, but they would be the same, same old projects that we do. The, the, what I'm looking for in inclusive economic development is really to develop communities that have been left behind, that have been said, wait till your turn, and I think the turn is now. We have the opportunity now to invest in physical infrastructure that will be able to lift up the communities that I serve every day. The ones that I go to work at in Del Paso Heights, the ones I drive by in Meadowview and Valley High and serve that community, and this is the opportunity that we have to really build physical structures and invest in our community in meaningful ways. Thank you very much. And Oak Park and a whole lot of other communities as well.
Our next speaker is Tracy Siegler, then Macworthy.
Good evening, mayor, city council, city manager. First, there was a brief discussion a little bit earlier about what is inclusive economic development. So, I just poured a well-received and well-known sort of definition. It goes like this. Inclusive economic development is a community-based strategy that aims to improve the economic opportunity for all with a focus on disadvantaged neighborhoods and residents. And all of those definitions really seem to focus on the neighborhood level and those that are disadvantaged. And so, hopefully, that sort of frames what I think the understanding of, of calling our movement when we're looking at Measure U and the allocation of funds toward inclusive economic development. Prior agenda item, Councilmember Hanson spoke about trust and confidence, and I think it's very important that we frame everything that we do in, in terms of trust and confidence. By creating an avenue for Measure U funds to be used for inclusive community economic development, the city can begin to plan for long-term stewardship of every district, making space for development projects that have lasting fiscal and social returns for all of our communities. We support the proposed incremental approach to set aside funds. We look forward to working with you on your continued commitment to building our great city in an inclusive manner and ensuring funds are properly allocated towards that goal. This will create the trust and confidence that our community desires. I thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Appreciate it. Who's next?
Next speaker is Macworthy, then our final speakers are Frank Louis and Sue Ying.
How many people look like me was in those discussions when you were discussing the budget to put this on paper? How many business, not nonprofit, businesses? Check that out because we see the blueprint of socialism. This is the blueprint of socialism, people. This is it. Black folk, you will never have nothing in this country. When you tell me that you're going to set aside $5 million and we're going to build the neighborhood, who going to own the neighborhood, the city? See, people, that's where you're making a mistake. You're not bringing people in that understand socialism and ignorancy. We don't need you to tell us what to do in our neighborhood. We need you to put money where we can lend. I got an idea that I can put together to people here that said they are leaders. The assets in that property, put that in the bank and parlay it together, and they bill it, and when they're billed, it's taken off, and what's left over, they profit. Black people haven't profit from nothing of development here. We talk about, not eight-hour job, eight-hour job is no profit. We talk about investment. Sad people, sad. Now, when you talk about 71% of the budget go to two areas, fire department and police department. And what we will see here is a downturn in economics. If you don't vote my president back in, we going to see some sad garbage here, people. You got to vote Trump back in to keep from having a civil war. Face it. Now, you got to face it. All the stuff you put on here don't mean nothing if you don't vote President Trump back in. A wealthy Americans will not support socialism, and this is exactly what we got here. Socialism. We need to support capitalism and the Constitution of the United States.
And our final speaker on this item is Frank Louis and Sue Ying.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. My name is Frank Louis. I represent the businesses on Stockton Boulevard. I'm here today with Sue Ying.
Ying, nice to see you.
Anthony Lu, representing the Greater Sacramento Vietnamese Chamber. What does inclusive economic development mean for us on Stockton Boulevard? Prior to taking on this role as an executive director for Stockton Boulevard, I too was a small business owner. Back in 1989, my wife and I started Louis Restaurant in the corner of Broadway and Stockton Boulevard. During those times, there was no commerce. We were pretty much a food desert. There was nothing on the corners. And it was just nine years later that the Rayleigh's with, developed the Rayleigh's Food Source. It was with the help of SHRA. And with SHRA, it helped spear development in the 80s with the little Vietnamese center. And when we talk about, you know, return on investment, mayor, one of the things that, when we had the tools with SHRA, they were able, able to help business owners build capacity. And from there became, you know, they were able to build job creation. What we're looking for as we move forward, when you folks have the discussion with inclusive economic development, we have projects on Stockton Boulevard, certainly infrastructure projects. We have an opportunity with just, not just talking about Aggie Square, but what it means to raise the entire boulevard, not just on portions of Stockton Boulevard, but continue that momentum throughout the boulevard. And just as our ask is, when we, when you folks have these discussions, you know, in a meaningful way, that Stockton Boulevard is a dated order corridor, the old Highway 99, and we would certainly be appreciative for any help that you, you can provide us. So, us, for us to help business owners, you know, build capacity, especially with business dealing with a lot of...
Mr. Louis, your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment?
I apologize. Sue, do you want to, Sue Ying, say a few words as well?
Yes, can continue. Yes, Sue, I'm sorry.
Good evening, mayor, and all the members of council.
There you go.
I'm kind of long or short. Well, I will only speak a couple of sentences tonight, very simple and easy. My name is Sue Ying Plaskett. I'm a small business owner from Stockton Boulevard. I'm in Stockton Boulevard for 36 years. I'm, I'm the first Asian market ever in there. From compared to 36 years ago and now, it's a day and night difference already. But by any means, we still haven't up to the coast yet. We do need a lot of help, and especially and all the bu, building structure, all this. So, that's all I'm here to ask when our Measure U funding come down. Please, please, mayor, don't forget Stockton Boulevard. That's all I need to say. Thank you. I told you, simple and short.
Thank you, Ying. It's wonderful to see you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all very much for me. That is the public testimony. I'd like to turn it back over to the council. Again, tonight, we're not taking a vote, right? But I know that I, as the mayor and the city manager, would like to hear from the council members in public session here, obviously, to provide some direction so that we could begin drafting the appropriate resolutions when it comes to, when it comes to budget time. And there are two questions that I know the manager and I would like some council feedback on. Should we set aside money every year, separate from bonding, every year, and I asked for $40 million a year for five years, stated that back in February in my State of the City address, shall we make that commitment, recognizing that it has to be renewed every year because that's the nature of budgets? Secondly, within that $40 million a year, within it, not outside of it, shall we begin authorizing a incremental bonding program in the way that Mr. Colville described, so that we can begin generating the capital for the capital portion of economic development, whether it's the revitalization of our commercial corridors, affordable housing, providing capital, either loans or grants to small businesses, a whole category of what capital can be used for? Those are the two questions that I would like to hear from the council members on. Mr. Carr, are you up, or, or do you want to, I'll go with Mr. Guerra first?
I can be up.
You sure can. Go ahead.
So, Don, what I'd like to see is what our budget would look like under the mayor's proposal. If we were to set aside $5 million, do we see any red numbers in the immediate future?
Carr, Mr. Carr, if I may, we have not prepared the five-year forecast, assuming the council's going to take this action and do any increment of $5 or $25 million, but that's what tonight is for, so we can get some direction. We're going to come back in the following meeting to show you what that would look like.
In order to give direction, I need, I need to see what that looks like.
Well...
And the second thing is, in that budget, are we able to fund the things that we promised people we would fund, aside from inclusive economic development? Youth programs, after-school programs, sports programs. Are we able to fund those things to the extent that you funded them this year in your proposed budget in the out years if we took out the $5 million per year?
Well, if we do the quick math here, all you would do is look at the general fund Measure U forecast and deduct $5 million from there, and in year 2023, we would be in deficit.
If we took out $5 million?
Correct. And that's, that's just very high level. We could do more work when we come back next week.
I'd like to take a look at that and see what that looks like. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Guerra.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I, I want to thank Sue Ying for being here. I want, a lot of respect and admiration goes to you. For those who don't know her history, she's, she's also not only been a strong member of the community in, on Stockton Boulevard, but also has a reputation of being the gangbuster over there. And when we did have some serious issues with, with street gangs in that area, she took it upon herself to put herself in, in, in situations to, to build community and, and confront those issues. And I think because of, of that community involvement and that leadership, Stockton Boulevard has evolved much differently. Also, do want to thank Frank Louis also here, who, who's been here and, and true, Stockton Broadway is a, is a different location, and I think there are future opportunities that we've been working on to continue to, to look at, at that area. I think it's interesting today that the conversation that we're having really, I think, is about whether we budget for today or we budget for the future. And in, if I recall in my great classes of, at Sac State in the Masters of Public Policy Program, you learn in budgeting class that you look at the previous year to create your budget for the next year. And you do do forecasting, but the, the basic fundamentals are that. Are we, are we planning and creating a, we're having a conversation, are we having a conversation about today's budget, or are we having a conversation about what our future looks like? And I think that what the, when I was on, talking to voters about, and this question about Measure U came up and why would support it, is it was clearly to think about what is the future outlook for our city? And what can we do to invest in areas that have not seen the benefits of the success of the city? Stockton Boulevard, Power and Road, Elder Creek, Lemon Hill, Folsom Boulevard. I hear it when I've gone to community meetings at the College Glen Neighborhood Association about why we can't improve Folsom Boulevard, you know... about why we can't improve Folsom Boulevard, you know, what are the issues there, when we clearly know that they have significant infrastructure needs. You heard it today, the significant challenge is still on Stockton Boulevard. And even with, with all of that's gone in there, I think the community there that has some grit and some energy have been able to revive Little Saigon in the south area with very little of, of, of public resources. I think the, the small public resources that were available through redevelopment helped jumpstart in that area, but for the most part, it, it has been a challenge with them, and they feel that they've, they've gone at it alone. There are bigger challenges to solve that I think that the city could help in addressing that. I think we heard some of the comments here that public infrastructure is something that is a responsibility of the city, and to figure out, how do we actually have the capacity to address those issues is critical. I want to, do want to recognize the city manager. Again, I mentioned last meeting that his budget did have significant components for economic development and figuring out how do we become more strategic and as far as our human capital to be able to achieve those pieces. But we, what we do need is, I think, this bigger vision to figure out, how do we grow the pie? If not, we will always be fighting for slices of the pie. And, and if we don't continue to, to grow the pie, we'll end up beating all of the pie with very little but the crumbs left. So I, I think that the question that we have today, and the mayor has proposed, is should we look at a different option than what's been the traditional public policy budgeting practice? And I, for one, will ask the city manager to, to produce a, a budget that looks at the $40 million idea of inclusive economic development, and look at what does that look like to make sure that we can revitalize those forgotten corridors. Every day when I leave from work and I get on Stockton Boulevard and I see the vacant lots right behind West Campus and, and Mark Twain Elementary, and see the trash that's built up from some of the illegal dumping in the gated areas, I think there could be so much more. When I drive down and I see the vacant lots by the Colonial Theater and think about, wow, couldn't this be a great art district that's producing tax revenue and property tax revenue that could fund all of our essential resources that we need for the city? I mean, I'm always fighting for more code officers, but the, the more that we have more code officers, we, we have to pay for those somehow, and we only do that by looking at growing our tax revenue. We've had this conversation over and over again to figure out, how do we do that? We know that some of these projects may require a lot of capital at one time. And I'm glad that the, that the, our city treasurer and the mayor brought up this issue because I was concerned about just immediately bonding out a bunch of money without identifying projects and not knowing exactly where to go. I think this gives our public process, the Measure U process and committee and the Investment Committee, a real challenge to identify if this budget was to move forward, what are the true projects that are going to achieve the return for the city? Councilmember Harris brought that up. We need to look at what's going to create strong, positive returns for the city. You know, we've had the benefit of being a city that is not only the state capital, the county seat, and also the headquarters of all of the large regional governments. So we'd have the benefit, including, and I've benefited from this, my family's benefited from this, from being a public employee. But we've also seen what's happened at the times when the economy went down. I remember having the, the IOUs, and thank goodness for our, our local credit union that would honored those IOUs when not having a paycheck. And so if we ever have a downturn again, we need to look at, how do we diversify our economy? Because we will be able, need to be able to balance those issues. So I also would like to ask the city manager and the city treasurer to look at, at this direction of a more modest incremental bonding only when projects are identified. And I think that this is an approach that we could use. I've asked, talked to the, the city treasurer about this. I'd also like to explore how we enhance or focus our RISE program so that the, the, the banks that are working with us also provide lending and capital to areas like Stockton Boulevard and Folsom Boulevard, and those small businesses that generally have a tough time getting access to capital. If we really want to invest in entrepreneurs, we got to figure out unique ways to get them to invest in the capital, and that might be a unique way. So with that, Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager-
About the $40 million, Councilmember Guerra.
Yes, I mentioned that in the beginning here.
Did you say that again?
Yes, that was in the beginning.
You were okay with your, support that direction?
Yes, I said, let's ask the city manager to come back with the, this $40 million that includes, that is focused on inclusive economic development.
Got it. Thank you.
And, and part of that, I know, is, is some of the issues of the snaps and the, and figuring out how to, how to do targeted, targeted development in certain areas that have bigger challenges. I want to see that piece there. So, yeah. Well, thank you for that, Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I, I too want to give direction as far as setting aside the $40 million over the five years and taking a look at the incremental bonding program. I want to see what that looks like. It's my understanding, based on the conversation that we just had, that every year, we as a council would determine what we would bond against. And so we'd have the opportunity to do that every year and make that decision. And in doing so and making that decision, it would allow us to know whether or not that project would bring in the revenue that's necessary for us to bond against it. And so with those kinds of flexibilities, I do believe that we need to set that up now. I too walk the streets in talking to constituents about Measure U. And in talking to them and walking the streets, especially in some of the communities that are in my district and others as well, the conversation came up about inclusive economic development, and what does that mean? And my best way of describing that was, what it really meant was, we were going to strive for economic equity. We were going to go into communities that had suffered and needed safe places, or mental health services, or didn't have the kinds of economic resources that were necessary for a community to thrive. I could talk about Oak Park. I could talk about the Mack Road Corridor. I can definitely talk about Florin Road, where I spent 10 years of my life working. I could talk about Franklin. I could talk about Del Paso Corridor, Del Paso Boulevard, I'm sorry. And I could talk about Stockton Boulevard. I could go to all the different corridors that I drive the streets in order to avoid getting on the freeways, just to see how our city is growing and developing, and know that we have not made significant investment in those corridors for years. So if we don't make the investment that's necessary to get those corridors up in order to take care of the people who live there, if we don't, if we're not intentional about moving forward and trying to make those corridors better, then those corridors will always stay like they are. And for many of us, we just avoid driving down that street. We don't go and look and see what's happening there right now. We don't see the neglect. We don't see the lack of economic investment. We see economic disinvestment. And that's not the city I want to live in. I want to make sure that I live in a city that every single council, every single district has the investment that equals to economic equity. So I'm in favor of looking at this plan in a lot more detail. The $40 million set aside for five years and the bonding program, incremental bonding program as well. And I'd like to at least come back for us to be able to discuss that and see that in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your two questions, and I'm certainly happy to provide you answers to those. You know, the discussions about our neglected corridors are real. I have one myself, North Gate. We, all of us, as colleagues, have an area that we want to improve in our districts. And, yeah, Angelique says her district is perfect, so, so we just save some money.
It's pretty close.
Well, you know, but the fact of the matter is, you have to live within your means, you know? You have to temper your desires so that you stay fiscally strong and make very strategic decisions about these things. As far as setting aside $40 million a year, I see that as not something that we can even consider. If you look at the first half cent of Measure U and you take into consideration our CalPERS obligations and obligations that we will soon make with bargaining units, you realize that without the second half of Measure U being part of the picture in our next fiscal year, we're already in red ink. Just go back and look at the previous budgets, and you'll see what all the forecasts are. Don and Laney have done this for years, and we have a pretty clear picture of the path forward. So I think that that is something that cannot happen personally. Now, as far as whether we could set aside $5 million a year and take on debt, basically mortgage our real estate assets to achieve the goals that have been articulated by some of my colleagues and that I also share, that is certainly something that I am willing to look at. However, it requires an analysis in the fiscal projection of how that debt service is going to add to our burden in out years, because we have to have a plan to pay our debts. We can't pretend that the second half of Measure U is a segregated fund. You know, the only promises that this council made to the people of the city of Sacramento were stated in the ballot language, and many people did vote for Measure U, the one cent Measure U, for those specific purposes. The manager's budget achieves basically all of those goals, but in increments that are not super fast or super robust, but we do live within our means if we look at the manager's budget. I think it's, while it's certainly balanced and it's insightful, and it does show a pathway moving forward. I like the idea that if we were to use the second half cent of Measure U for debt service payments on a bond sale, that we have, you know, a really robust discussion about each project and what it means to our debt load, what it means to our budget forecast moving forward five years, so that we can afford these projects. You know, the fact of the matter is, even as we passed Measure U in November, we had looming obligations that we can't get away from. We just can't. We have to balance our budget, and we have to pay those debts. So embedded in the manager's budget are many of these types of projects. Again, you know, we'd like to have lots of cash, and we'd like to fix Stockton Boulevard, and fix North Gate, and fix Florin and Franklin, you know, all of them, all at once. The money's just not there. You know, we can incur a lot of debt and make the money be there, but I'm not seeing a clear pathway forward to pay that debt. $5 million I could swallow and look at where we get, but when I spoke about return on investment before, you know, we can't like bond $25 million of Measure U and spend it all on infrastructure projects that bring no return on investment. The mayor talked about expanding our economy. Well, I like that idea. You know, if we expand our economy, we expand our tax base, and then we start to get return on investment. But Measure U itself, it's not going to pay debt service for 30 years. We will get into red ink in a few years in the future, given our current obligations. So you have to take that into account. You know, the, the essential question is, how much debt can we afford to take on and still maintain our fiscal health? And that's where I will rely heavily on our treasurer and his advice, because I think, John, that you have a pretty clear idea about how to manage that, you know? So, so as we go forward, if we do, if, when we, we are not voting tonight, but if we do some kind of bond sale, you know, we really have to stress test it, as, as we've talked before. Any project that we take on, we, we have to look at a stress test. But these are big dollars, and our, our financial forecast is not real robust, given CalPERS. And, you know, when you take into account the looming possibility of a downturn, and nobody can prognosticate how severe it might be or how light it might be, but virtually everybody in the country is realizing that there is going to be some kind of change in the economy. You know, I'm willing to take on debt, but small amounts, small bites, because our fiscal projection is not real robust until we get past our CalPERS obligations and things level out, and we start to get a little more stable without incurring $13 million more burden every year. You know, that's a significant chunk of change. On the positive side, we do have $50 million this year to, to talk about, to talk about these very projects, Mr. Mayor, that you want to have happen and my colleagues want to have happen. This is really actually a better picture than we've had for years, all the years that I've been on council. We haven't had $50 million to bandy around and talk about. Of course, some of that will be encumbered by bargaining units. I get that, but there's still a substantial tranche of money for us to talk about projects in the near term. As the, as the treasurer pointed out, just even to move a bonding program forward is going to take almost a year's time to perfect it. So, you know, doing this in a measured approach, I think, is, is something that we can look at and should look at, but there is no way we can, we can segregate $40 million to Measure U every year, or we get into red ink next fiscal year. So I would like to direct the city manager to come back with his ideas, which you've articulated to a certain extent about a pay-go approach, a more measured approach of doing the budget the way we do our budget, and to find all the carryovers and, and, you know, put together the largest fund that we can without incurring debt, so that we have that to compare against an analysis of using $5 million to Measure U for debt service and bond out in the $80 million range to create that fund to move forward. But I clearly favor a very measured approach, and I would be looking for projects that at some point are going to have payback, that expand our economy so that we don't get into a debt trap. When you, when you pull all of the equity out of your house, right, because it's gone up in value, as some of our real estate assets have, and you use that money to pay debt service, you get into a trap. And you can get into the point where you can't pay your debts, and I am not willing to go there. So this idea of a looming recession weighs on me. I, I hope that everybody, you know, feels it coming, but we have to just prepare for it. And I would like to have a very strong fiscal picture for the city of Sacramento for all the rest of my days, and I hope my colleagues will too.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. You opened the meeting, Mayor, sort of changing position from what you said at budget and audit to this new strategy, and I tried to jot it down, but I want to make sure I got it right. So instead of taking $25 million a year and using it to securitize 200 or 400 or whatever that number would be, instead of doing that-
Yes.
-you are suggesting that we, once a year, as, tell me if I got this right, once a year, as a council, set aside some amount of funds. Your request is that we start with $40 million this year and hopefully do $40 million each year over five years?
May?
Yeah, that's sure.
Just as the city manager puts out a five-year forecast, I would like us to adopt a five-year spending plan, recognizing that the council has the discretion every year as part of the budget to shift that around. That's the $40 million. On the debt-
Let me just make sure I'm right. Was it $40 million a year, each year for the next five years?
That's right.
So you want $40 million this year, $40 million next year, for five years?
Correct. But recognizing that that decision, if we state that intent-
Sure, we could change it next year.
Could change.
Yeah. So we'd have to vote each year, but it would be an intent deal. And again, we're not voting tonight. I just want to make sure I understood.
Yes.
It wasn't an accumulation of 40 over five, it was 40 each-
That's correct.
-year, okay? And, but in addition to that being a year-by-year vote, so say this year, everyone says, yeah, that's great, but then they don't get what they want during the year, and next year they go, that didn't-
My votes can change anything here.
Sure. Next year, that didn't work, so we don't do it. But we would have to vote on it again. It wouldn't automatically happen.
As part of the budget.
Okay.
Exactly.
And maybe one year it wouldn't be the same amount, or it could be more, or it could be less one year, depending on what happens?
Depending. Can I just go on, just on that point? So we've asked that Measure U be separated out of the budget for persuasive analysis. Once we set a direction, money is money, whether it's traditional general fund, Measure U, or even, let's not forget, the IGF Fund.
Innovation and Growth Fund.
I'm not saying that- I'm not saying that all the Measure U or 80% of the second half of Measure U needs to go into the equity fund. It could be a combination of Measure U, Innovation and Growth Fund dollars.
I get it.
It could be other sources. I'd be fine with directing the city manager to say, you put, fine $40 million, put it into the economic equity fund every year, whether it is second half of Measure U, whether it's IGF, whether it's, whether it is carryover, which I don't want to rely on, but if it's there...
Sure, whatever source is cobbled together.
Source, come on. Doesn't all have to be the second half of Measure U.
Well, and that's how the IGF fund originally came about, with the previous mayor.
It's really an expanded IGF fund is what I'm talking about.
And then in addition, your proposal is that, once we have that fund in place, that anything that would be spent out of that fund would come before this council and the council would decide. So there's both a...
With the guidance of the Investment Committee and the Advisory Committee around economic development.
The Investment Committee being the one...
It hasn't been named yet that the city manager is naming.
But for Howard's team.
Correct.
Okay.
Plenty of checks and balances.
Okay, thank you for answering those questions. Would, one last question for you, Mayor. Would this year's 40 million include the 16 million we already gave you?
Me? No. Let's be clear, though. The city manager's proposed budget has a $51 million carryover. So my idea would be to take 40 of that 51 and put it into the equity fund.
So your idea for this year would be to approve the city manager's plan as proposed?
Well, it's interesting. Next week, we're going to talk about police and fire. And the irony of the, I guess, apparent disagreement I have with fire now is that I actually support the city manager's proposed augmentations to both the police and fire budget.
Well, I mean, the city manager's budget has a lot of stuff, economic development parts...
Oh, I understand, but I'm just saying the two aren't exclusive. This year, we can afford that and it's $17 million in terms of what he's requesting ongoing. I think we can sustain that because we have IGF, we have the second half of Measure U. We can do this.
I just want to make sure, because you're saying a lot of words, I'll make sure I have it clearly.
No, it's confusing.
It's not confusing, but I want to make sure I have it right. So you want to approve the city manager's budget for this year and your proposal for achieving the $40 million this year is not to do the council members' priorities or to whittle that down to, what is it?
11 million.
11 million? Which, by the way, doesn't even cover my ask, which is the first ask I've ever had out of any general fund for a community center or pool.
It'll be up to the council, but I think this...
Okay, bye. I want to make sure I have it right.
Yep.
So use that 50 million to start this fund, right?
40.
Okay, knock that down to 11 and then take 40 into this fund.
Correct.
But we wouldn't, you don't have any projects to propose right now?
Over the course of the year, we would identify $40 million worth of economic development projects focused on our neighborhoods, could begin with Stockton Boulevard, could begin with Del Paso Boulevard.
The idea is to bring forward things like Northgate or Stockton or whatever during the year and have that 40 million set aside. Proposals wouldn't come right now. We would take them one by one over the year.
Correct.
Okay. Making sure I understand where you're talking about all of these resources coming from. So obviously, if we did it that way, then next year, there wouldn't, there could be 40 million in the second half, generated by the second half Measure U, that isn't already obligated. But I don't quite read the budget that way as proposed right now. I understand what you said about 17 million and ongoing, but I think it's higher than that, particularly with some of the retirement obligation stuff in there. So I guess I would, that's one of my directions to staff today is like, we need to better understand how we would simultaneously, because this is the question that Councilmember Carr asked, which is really the most important question of all, how do you do both, right? So what are we giving up if we do, what can we do, the budget that Howard has proposed and everything that he has in there and still do this? And beyond this year, how would we do it in future years and what would that do in the out years to our budget? So for me, 40 million is way too high. And I, don't blame you for putting it out there because if you cast long and get something shorter than that or even that, then, you know, you have more money to work with. But that is a lot of money from Measure U into a fund to be worked with over the year. I also, you know, from a bonding capacity standpoint, in some ways, there's nothing really that you're proposing that we can't already do anyway. We already are just five votes away anytime we want from doing a bonding, we could bond tomorrow if we identified a funding source and we wanted to take a project, we want to take up Stockton Boulevard next week, we could. There's nothing stopping us from doing that. We don't need this in place to do that. Oh, yeah, the Scheneer Rule, 10 days. We would need 10 days, but after that, we could do it. So I don't see how what you're proposing, other than intent, changes our current abilities. We could do this anytime that we want. And if you truly believe that we could pass the city manager's budget as it is and still have funding to do this, then we really don't need to set aside the 40 million. We would just, when we have the $51 million discussion, you would propose that as your idea. So the council members have all put items on that list. You could put that item out as a separate vote. So everybody is deciding which things on that $51 million list they want to do. In other words, if we separated these two votes right now, it sounds like there's unanimity almost for Howard's budget, including you. And your discussion is around taking the 40 million from the 51, which is another discussion that this council will have over the next couple of weeks. And if, whenever we have that discussion, maybe we can have some of these answers, but one-time funds of 40 million out of the 51 is something you could propose. I wouldn't support it because I think there...
Hey, I'm proposing it.
Okay, but then I'm just saying separately from the city manager's budget, it sounds like you're saying the city manager's budget is fine.
No, don't put words in my mouth, please.
I thought you just said that you wanted to pass the city manager's budget.
I said that the investments in the city manager's budget, I'm prepared to largely support. There is a carryover of $51 million. I'm suggesting that for the next five years, $40 million a year be put into an economic equity fund. That includes this year. So that's consistent.
But the $51 million's one-time funds this year...
I understand, and I'm suggesting that next year, the city manager be directed to do the same thing, albeit the council would have to re...
And there may not be a $51 million carryover next year. Sort of a unique year with the switch-up of Measure U and...
I'm happy to explain during my close. I'm happy to explain.
Sure. I think I understand, Mayor. I don't think that I have any complication understanding. What I, I guess what I was saying is it sounds like we're all in support of Howard's budget and that's good because then we can move that forward and then we can have a conversation around the 51 million when that piece comes separately, which I'm happy to do. But I would tell you now, I could probably support some amount going into a fund, but not 40 million when everybody else has priorities for one-time expenditures in their districts too, that they all fought for, for Measure U or whatever, or for many years waited for the city to have resources to be able to do. And then the other piece for me that just doesn't sit well with this, I think the good news is today there's no vote and what we have coming over the next couple of weeks is each department's presentation. And I just, I continue to think that it's just, it's lost somewhere out there, what Howard is proposing because much of the thing that everyone keeps saying about economic development is in his budget. And so when we hear the economic development presentation or the youth presentation or the parks and rec presentation, I think people will be very happy to hear in detail what his budget brings that is new, that was exactly what the mayor and this council said to the community they would receive and the arts position and, you know, all the things that are in there. And there might be some things that people want to add or change or the childcare piece or whatever, and that would be a normal budget discussion. But I also think there are things that, you know, come up that this council needs to have funding to deal with. And I'm going to throw one out there right now that I just recently learned about, that I think is appalling and I hope we take it up. You know, over the last year, it's not been a surprise, we've struggled with homeless encampments around City Hall. And you know who cleaned up those city council encampments? Our janitors. Did you know that the janitors in this building are primarily Latinas, older? Did you know that they make $15 an hour on their contract? But if they want health insurance, they have to lose a dollar an hour. If this council's okay with that, that people make $14 an hour to have health insurance and pick up hypodermic needles, which is largely what they had to do, I don't want to be a part of that. I want them to have health insurance and make a good wage and I want us to have the money, Mayor, to do that. And I want that contract to come back, city manager, because I want to know why the janitors in this building have to take a pay cut to have health insurance when this council, which I was on at the time, directed that that not be a portion of in their contract. But stuff like that comes up all the time. I spent half of last week dealing with personnel issues for city staff here that were frustrated with things that happened. And we need funds to deal with those issues when they come up. I don't want to obligate all of our funding so that we can't be nimble. And at the same time, Mayor has a really great point. I'm wearing a SacRepublic shirt today because I did some promotion stuff with them around Sheik and Coach. We need money to get MLS here, just like we needed money to get the NBA to be here. Every city has to grapple with those things and there will be a time that we need those funds. I don't want those funds to already be obligated to something else and we can't get them back to fight for a priority that this city wants. I also, like Jeff Harris, do not want to be a part of a council that drives the city into insolvency. And for the first time in my tenure here, which is the longest term, I'm nervous about that. I'm nervous that a decision around this budget, which is ironic because as Alan Warren tells me all the time, this should be our best budget year ever. We're sitting in the best spot we've ever been in and it's disappointing that we're arguing.
Hey, don't steal my thunder.
Okay, I won't say that. But that's what he says to me and he's right. He's always so positive and I wish that that was the conversation we were having too because it's so much great that could be coming right now. And instead, I feel like we're fighting and I would rather, you know, we passed Howard's budget if we all pretty much agree on that, or not, Mayor, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if we all pretty much do, we could get pretty, we could get there on that and then we could figure out what we want to do in out years or with the 50 million separately. But I think we need to be mindful, that we not make a decision. Some of you said you want to think about the future. Well, so do I and so do, I know Councilmember Hanson does. We talk about it all the time. I want the council 10 years from now to thank this council. I want the council 15 years from now to say, thank goodness those guys were council members. They took care of some of our biggest problems for us. We can handle our pension liability now. We can add on. We can do things we wanted to do. And I don't want communities to wait that long. I think there are ways to do it and we found ways. And I think we can continue to find ways and now we have more resources. But to obligate them out front is to handcuff ourselves and that would be a mistake, a big one, and I hope we don't do it.
Councilman Scheneer.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start with this. So this is an act of balancing, as are most things that we do. And I think Mr. Guerra said it when we talk about, are we planning for today, are we planning for the future? And I think we have to do both. We have to take care of our responsibilities and look forward. But I've certainly spent, and I know all of my colleagues have, a lot of time looking at this budget and trying to understand where we should be going. And so I have, I have a number of comments, but I actually would like, if I can ask Chris to come up, I just have a question for you. I don't want to interrogate you, but I have a piece of knowledge that I'd like to get from you. So we have more or less about $95 million that will get out of Measure U each year at the penny. And firefighters' union has been really helpful in passing the original Measure U and passing this one. So I think that's a real credit to you guys and the fact that you're part of a larger institution. My question for you is, what do you think is the appropriate percentage that should come out of Measure U for public safety?
I don't have a percentage for public safety. I just know that there's needs in the city that we've talked about for years, such as, it just, and I can only speak on the fire department, not on the police department.
Well, let's just take the fire department.
So you have response time issues. We have a standards of coverage report that came out in 2016 that went nowhere. We have tons of areas in the city that are not covered correctly for response times. We have huge infrastructure problems where we have a department that would like to grow, that would like to be able to be nimble and move and make changes and adjust what we do, but we don't have the buildings to do that.
So I would answer that by saying we have similar needs, not the same type, but similar needs across the board in everything we do. I mean, I'm pretty sure the police department could say the same things, our youth and parks department could say the same things. But what I'd love to do, so for us, it's always a balancing act. How much do we put over here? How much do we put over here? How much do we invest today? And as Mr. Guerra said, how much are we investing in the future? So I'd love to have that discussion with you because I think it's important for all of our kind of stakeholders to come and say, as you think about the budget, we think you should put X percent into this and how do we go forward with that? So I'm happy to have that discussion with you if you, if you don't have an answer. And I can, just doing fire is fine if you want to do that. I'm going to ask the same question of our P O A as well.
Yeah, that would be fine. I think that, as I said in my letter, the issue that we have is locking up money through bonding in the future and not giving this council the ability to change, make adjustments based on some of the things like Councilmember Harris said. We have a recession that's coming eventually.
So if, let me just ask then, if the council made an annual decision as the mayor's proposing around an additional $5 million worth of debt payment, is that something? And we can make that decision every year, which is what we would be doing. Is that enough flexibility?
No.
Not, so not identifying? Even if you're identifying the specific projects, the council is voting on bonding towards a set of specific projects, you would still oppose that?
Well, I don't have all that to give you an answer. I haven't researched that or have done anything on that to tell you one way or the other.
I'd love to have that conversation.
Okay.
But I think that's kind of the crux of what we're talking about and I think it's important. I mean, I think what the mayor's come up with is kind of a balancing act of his own of how do we invest in certain areas while at the same time retaining as much flexibility as we can. So, okay. You guys are about 19% of Measure U out of the full penny.
So, May, can I say one more thing, Jay? I just want to say that in 2012, when the firefighters pushed Measure U and were, as you said, very involved in getting that done, we understood that we were passing a general sales tax. And while we would have loved to have all that money go to the fire department or the police department, we understood that that wasn't possible and that it had to be a balanced approach. It's the same thing here. We've extended Measure U and we've added to it to a general fund tax. It should be put in the general fund and used each year and figured out each year what our priorities are based on what the needs of the city are. At that time, the economy, different issues.
I totally understand. I don't think we're doing something very much different and I want to get to kind of the framing of how I look at it, but thank you and I'm more than willing to have that discussion with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So obviously, and I've said this a couple of times today, and I represent Oak Park and Woodbine area, North and South City Farms. I represent some areas that have high poverty. We have lots of members on this dais who do the very same thing with the areas that represent, they represent. I think in those areas, people have been waiting a long time and we've kind of asked for their patience and we've told them to wait over and over again. And I've had this conversation with a lot of folks in my district and I think people have become impatient with waiting and very much rightly so. And I think we saw, for various reasons, we saw a lot of that frustration over the past year. I think that we have, as a council, an opportunity, that's once-in-a-lifetime opportunity here, to really meet the needs of those folks who've been told to wait over and over again for years and years and years. And I'm talking about Del Paso Boulevard and I'm talking about Meadowview and I'm talking about Valley High, talking about Stockton Boulevard. I don't know that we can afford to wait much longer when we have the ability to do something here that I think is pretty special. What I believe the mayor is asking is framing our budget discussions over the next number of years and framing them to the place of where do we start the discussion? And we can start the discussion saying, oh, maybe we can spend $10 million or $15 million on this issue this year. Or we can start the discussion and say, what we've made a commitment to is starting at a $40 million piece that is where we're going to invest in our neighborhoods. And I think that's really important because... And I think that's really important, because we don't want to go and have to say every year and justify, you know, this neighborhood is now waiting, so give us five million dollars or three million dollars for the Mercado on Franklin Boulevard or, or the Cologne, or the theater project that you want to do. These are things that we have the ability to raise a fund today to be able to do it. And I think what, what this proposal has in it is the flexibility to look at the economy and say, you know what? Maybe this year we can't add debt because we have gone into a recession and put it off. But what it's doing is saying, look, this is what our aspirational goal is. This is what we believe the community wants and deserves as we go forward. And I apologize, I'll try to be shorter. So I, I think we, we have to set those goals and say, and, and be honest with the community and say, we know this is going to be difficult, and it's going to take a lot of work, and I want to go into that a little bit, but, but it's important for us to set that goal and set our sights really high and work with our community and with our private investors to try to reach that and set that goal for the community so we know where we're trying to go together. So we know that we're trying to grow this economy. And when we can invest in neighborhoods where there's, whether there's a very specific ROI from a project or just enhancing the neighborhood is going to bring more business to the neighborhood, and the ROI from the neighborhood is going to grow as well. So I want to be in the place where we're starting off each discussion every year on our budget by saying, this is what we hope to do this year. This is the investments that we want to make, all the while working with the community through the investment committee and through the Measure U committee. And those are recommendations. So we have, and I think the mayor said this as well, we have a number of checks and balances on this. We are not taking a forty-million-dollar pot and saying, we're going to go out and do X, Y, and Z. What we want to do is take that forty-million-dollar pot and say, these are the recommendations that have come from the business community, come from the community as well, gone through the Measure U community, have been vetted in both of those ways, then come to the council for an annual vote and say, should we do this or not? And have the discussion about, how will this impact our overall economy? How will this impact the quality of life for people in this community? I said last time when we talked about this, I believe in strategic risk. We have to do something different, or we will continue to muddle along and provide not quite enough services across the board, whether it's in fire, whether it's in police, whether it's in our, our youth programs that we're doing. We don't have enough of anything to do what everyone in this community deserves. And the only way that we're going to grow the pie here is by taking some strategic risk. And I think the way it's been established and the way it's been set up, it's really minimizing the risk that we have. So I'm going to support both what Mr. Jennings and Mr. Guerra have talked about. Mr. City Manager, to come back with direction to look at a forty-million-dollar pot each year, how you get to that, whether it's the I G F, and that will go down significantly in a couple of years, whether it's carryover, whether it's savings. And I, I don't want to negate the impact of the Management Partners Report that's coming and our need to really look at how we do business. We talk a lot about efficiencies. I think there's two things we're talking about here. One are savings, because maybe we can't or don't fill positions along the way, but the other is actually how we do business. Are there, there are things that we should be doing differently that will cost us less money? And frankly, are there things we shouldn't be doing at all that others could do? I, I don't know what the answer to that. I know we made a commitment that no one would lose their jobs during this. I'm fully behind that commitment, but I think we need to look down the line and see where we're going to be as a city, where our infrastructure is going to be. The last thing I want to say on this is, I, I'm very supportive, Mr. City Manager, of all the, the pieces that you put into the budget. What, the way I think of those, it's really about building infrastructure, whether it's in the Department of Youth Parks and, and Community Enrichment, whether it's police, whether it's fire stations or battalion chiefs. What we're trying to do is build the infrastructure that our city needs to operate. What, what we're talking about with the bond funding is really being able to build those projects that's supported by this infrastructure and that we need to, to move forward. So again, whether it's the Mercado on Franklin, which could produce jobs both in the construction and implementation, whether it's investing, frankly, in the workforce development work that Aggie Square will do, which I think could be a huge boon to us and bring thousands of jobs to our neighborhood, whether it's getting another Centene, I think there's lots of things that we can do there, and those are investments that we should be making in our own future. So I'm supportive of coming back. I look forward to the discussion that. But what I want to do is start every year off with forty million dollars and say, this is where we should be. How do we spend it? And frankly, if we, I think we need to sometimes push ourselves to do business a little differently and a little smarter. And so if, if we show a couple of years of red ink at this point down the road, I'm okay with that, because I think it gives us incentive to get there and make those changes that are necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Councilmember Hanson, Steve.
Thanks, Mayor. This is a really difficult conversation. I don't know if everybody can tell, but Mayor, you're passionate, but yet you're, you're trying to sort of figure out where to land here, because you made a lot of commitments during the Measure U campaign. You're trying to fulfill them.
Yes.
On the, on the other side of it, you know, we each feel the imperatives of the people we represent, and we, you know, are at various points in our contracts with the public and trying to figure out how to meet their needs. But I will say, you know, the, the decisions of the council before we got here have bound us up. You know, those decisions to bond in the nineties or the early two thousands to build things have served the public, but we live with that debt. And we pay that debt. And when you look at the cost of, if you look at the, the city treasurer's chart, to, to take five million dollars a year to, for thirty years to get eighty-eight point two or eighty-seven point five million, if it's non-tax exempt, you're going to pay thirty times five for that. So that's a hundred and fifty million dollars to get eighty-eight million dollars. And, you know, I posted this article from New York Times today about being Gen X, because I am barely Gen X. I turned forty later this year. But the previous generations have made so many decisions for us, it's really limited our choices. And there's no greater example of that than our CalPERS obligations, which in the 2015-16 budget were zero extra, but rise to, if I remember the number right, a hundred and thirty-nine million. And that has sopped up every additional dollar of general fund growth that normally we'd have to fix parks, to build community centers, to build fire stations. I feel particularly like upset about that, if, if that's the right word, but it's hard to be upset when it's just the reality. And then you come along, Mayor, and you want forty million dollars a year, and I think Councilmember Ashby is partially right. We have all these priorities in our district that if we say yes to you, it's likely we have to tell our constituents no, because there will be zero dollars left available. And I, I just, I mean.
Where's that point?
Well, let me, let me just continue. So we spent almost all of our mid-year money on things that you wanted for inclusive economic development, homelessness, youth programs, other things. None of that counts here. None of that counts. You're not crediting that. At, at least that's what I heard earlier. And so those dollars, that sixteen million for homelessness, the four million for youth, the, the other things aren't here. And, and then I just think, gosh, District Four, we, we are the job center of the region. A lot of the people that are, are living in the neighborhoods that we're talking about, they're looking for work in my district, but my district isn't part of the inclusive economic development conversation, because it's not Meadowview, it's not Oak Park, it's not Valley High, it's not Del Paso Heights. But we're creating a lot of jobs in District Four. We're trying to create housing. We're trying to do all this other stuff to help with that crisis, but yet we're sort of left out of the conversation. So I feel like there's not much here for District Four. And that is important, but as I mentioned earlier, normally we would have a plan. What's our housing trust plan here? We don't have one. I don't know how much of this money that's being talked about will go towards building affordable housing. We know we have projects that are this close. We just can't close that gap because we don't have redevelopment anymore. So I can't quantify what eighty-eight million dollars of five million a year would get. And in thirty years, that housing would still be there, so maybe that, like a mortgage, because that's what we're going to be doing, makes it worthwhile. But then I think Jeff, in talking about PEGO, makes total sense. Like, the I G F sets aside what was the Boomerang funds, Mayor, puts it aside, and lets us make strategic decisions around it. And I think that is where you're trying to go. But it's also as if we're obligating ourselves with what we're going to spend it on before we even know what we're talking about. And I know that's a moral thing, not a legal thing, but every time someone comes up to the dais, to the podium, they want money for a program, we're not going to bond out, are we, for a community program? And I, I missed Ms. Ashby's comment, question to Amanda, but it sounded like the treasurer said the tax-exempt bonds could be used for, 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 for programmatic costs, not for building things. And that, that's really troubling, because guess what? If we took that five million for thirty years, we'd have a hundred and fifty million dollars, not eighty-eight, and we could actually invest more in the community. The other limiting factor, and, you know, we've got our fire union here, I don't know if PD is watching, but they both have binding arbitration in the charter. And binding arbitration doesn't look at what our ability to pay is, really. It just looks at what the comps are. And we could have imposed on us, through failed negotiations, very significant contract costs that would squeeze out all the other spending as we face this purse challenge and we look at potentially recession in the out years. Governor Newsom, in his May revise, said, you know, we've got to prepare for that, and he's looking at twenty-one, twenty-two for a recession. But we don't contemplate that here. And when Councilmember Chenier says, let's spend into the red a few years out, I'm comfortable with that. That does not make me feel comfortable about your plan, Mayor. It just doesn't. And I can't, in good conscience, spend the city into a, a situation that we barely avoided in 2010, 11, where the city could have easily ended up in, in a much worse place than we are right now. It was very prudent fiscal decisions, and I believe you don't want that either. I really believe that. We, we don't get to talk about it. I'm not in your Brown Act cohort on this.
We'll talk about it. I want to respond in my closing.
But, but I, I truly think this is probably the most, and this gets said a lot, one of the most consequential decisions this council could make. We set aside forty million a year, and we make that promise to this community, but we don't meet it. We'll be told we failed again. We failed them again. But at the flip side, when we do invest in the community, whether it's through things like Mr. Jennings Gang's Ta, Gang Task Force, or we invest in youth program, Councilmember Chenier last night told the R T Board, our city is putting a million dollars a year into free youth passes for transit. That hasn't been debated at this council, but we got a full presentation last night at the R T Board about what the city's going to do. It's a great idea. It's a potentially great program, but it's not been taken into context here. And I know that's on his council priorities list, but none of our other priorities are getting talked about. And so, Mayor, how are you going to reconcile the fiscal challenges, the need to invest in the community? The real need to, to fulfill your promises, and I, I think whether it's the Urban League or Roberts Family Development Center or the Asian Chamber, or any of the other really meaningful community groups that can help lift communities who've been left behind, they deserve that, that same shot at doing it. I don't know how we reconcile all these competing priorities, but I do think what you're trying to do is stop the growth of pension and labor costs from creeping in, but I don't know what it means for everything else that we care about. And that's, that in the end is the big conundrum. What are we going to do on arts? We don't have matching funds for S B one or any of the, the other programs that the state's created for housing to draw those things down and to really leverage. I don't see in this a strategy other than telling the, the labor unions, take your hands off the forty million dollars, and to the council members, hey, don't use that money for any of your priorities, because you're claiming it, and it's going to go through this opaque process of a investment committee in Measure U. So it doesn't feel like we know what we're talking about. And, and you know, Mayor, you mean very well, you're trying to do what you promised, but in the end here, I don't know what we're going to get. And that's really what's challenging to me. Mr. City Manager, I can't in good conscience support your budget until I know these out-year issues. So while everybody has said your budget's perfect, I can't say that. You've spent significant amounts of money on things that, if we make this decision about forty million dollars, we can't, we can't do all that stuff. We've got to reprioritize your budget and, and see how we deliver on the other community needs that we have. And I, I think that's just the real reality of it, and despite the headlines in the B that somehow we're breaking promises, the basic language of Measure U, the ballot question, they don't say that we're spending half on this and half on that. They talk about fire and police and libraries and all the, and parks, all the things that people like, but it doesn't exclude inclusive economic development by any means. And you have come a significant distance in your proposal tonight. You deserve credit for that. But also, in five years, you may be done and gone, and somebody else will inherit that. Because that, that's the end of the next mayor's term. What do we want to give that person or that next council?
A more robust economy, more, and, and better neighborhoods.
But, but do we? And I, I, I don't believe that we can always control the macroeconomy.
Of course not.
So the micro, yes, and that's the importance of the decision-making, but the macroeconomic trends will sweep us one way or the other. We can change the margins.
Good discussion. I'll, I'll respond in my, in my closing. I appreciate it. Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of hate these conversations, because they just go around and around, and I've heard the city manager get directions to develop three or four different budgets, one with red ink, one with no red ink, and some making assumptions. It's, it would be hard for me to vote for a budget with red ink in the out years after next year. So it's been suggested that you can wring out forty million dollars' worth of efficiencies in the current budget. And you probably could, but what, I'd like to know what that would look like. What would we have to give up in order to stay out of the red? What programs would we have to give up? What investments would we give up to stay out of the red? And at the same time, it is clear, it should be clear to all of us, that since S H R A was defunded, we don't have tools to spur economic development. And we have an opportunity here, maybe, to do something about that. So we got to figure this out, how we move forward on this. I am definitely not for bonding for programs. If we bond, it has to produce an economic benefit. And if we do, do it to support programs, the money runs out, the program goes away, and we have neither programs nor money. I am comfortable with the projections for the budget being conservative. There are two people in this organization I would love to be conservative. That's our finance folks. I want them to give me conservative projections. And my city attorney, I want to give very conservative projections as well. Everybody else in the city should be a risk taker. Everybody else should be cutting edge. So I don't know how you figure this out, Howard, but I would like to see a budget that has no red in the out years, and I'd like it explicitly stated upfront what we're giving up if we cannot wring forty million dollars' worth of inefficiencies out of our current operations. And if you can do that, if you can wring out forty million dollars' worth of inefficiencies, my next question is, why haven't you done that already? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Chenier?
Thanks. Couple of things real quick. One is, I, I don't think anybody's talked about using bond money for programs. I think Mr. Colville said you could do that in response to a question, but I wouldn't vote for that. I don't know that anybody on the dais would vote for that. So we're all in the same part on that one. I also didn't use the number forty million inefficiencies. I don't know what that's going to look like, but I think that's something that we really need to do and take a look at it. That's why we brought in these consultants to take a look, and they've been very successful in other places that have done it. You know, I, I, I actually want to address a couple of things Mr. Hanson said, because I think it's important. Golden one, convention. Golden One, Convention Center, Waterfront, MLS, those are all investments we've made to increase economic development in the downtown area. And that's hundreds of millions of dollars that we've put forward to it. So I think we have put a lot of money into it. And I also think, when we talk about inclusive economic development, it could be downtown. I don't think it's... I think there are certainly areas of need, but there are areas across the board that I think we would want to invest in, because we want a vibrant core. We think that's really important. That's why we've made the investments that we've made thus far. The other piece of that is, you know, if we did this and we went full out on the five years at five million a year, and you raised four hundred and forty million dollars, those are all projects in our neighborhoods. Those are potentially the Aquatic Center, or different things that we want to do. That's how we get the capital money to be able to pay for those things to do it. So I don't agree that if we do this, there's no money left for projects in our areas. I think we can use those funds specifically for projects in our areas in all of the districts across the board. I mean, we want the whole city to rise with this, and we don't have enough resources to be able to do that. So I think this gives us, as I said before, an opportunity to do something really special. There is some risk involved in it, but I think the risk is mitigated by an annual decision whether to move forward or not.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of points, picking up on some of the things that my colleagues stated. First of all, when I first got on this council back in 2010, there was a Fresh Management Partners report. So one sort of interesting thing in watching the council turn over is that it feels like sometimes something feels like a new idea, but it is really an old idea. The exact same company that you're talking about, doing an efficiency study, had just done an efficiency study, and it's less than ten years old right now. And most of that study was about contracting out city services. That is where they found the operational efficiencies. And this body, although different people were in the seats, said they didn't want to do that, said those weren't good democratic principles, didn't match up with your, you know, feelings about how to honor and respect people and make sure that workers have a livable wage. But there were some efficiencies that were taken. For example, we don't run our golf program anymore. We contracted golf out as part of that. That was a suggestion of Management Partners. It happened in the downturn, when we were trying to find savings. I can tell you what some of those suggestions were, contract out ambulance services. But this council said, you know, that would be subpar service. I agreed. You know, it got no support. So if you're talking about thinking that this Management Partners report is going to magically come up with something different than it came up with nine and a half years ago, I just, I don't see that happening. And I've heard at least three council members on this dais already say, "Don't bring me some efficiency plan that's a bunch of contracting out our employees." And I just gave you guys an example of how that is not working with our janitors, and how we need to bring that contract back and fix it in this building. So I don't think that's a good solution. And I just, you know, I don't know, I just have a hard time. It's hard not to be offended by some of the things that are said, because this idea that it's like an opportunity, I understand what folks want to do, and, you know, there's nothing up here that anybody's saying they want to do that's nefarious. It's all good. But, I mean, we... A parks worker, too, which is a supervisor in the Parks Department, that could supervise, you know, five or six staff, and works a forty-hour work week that is like breakback work in a park, takes home a check of twelve hundred dollars every two weeks. Just think about that. Twelve hundred dollars every two weeks, it's twenty-four hundred dollars, it's two thousand four hundred dollars a month, on average, for that individual to live off of. And that is a supervisor in our Parks Department. We have to honor these people, you guys. They need to make on par with what everyone else makes in our region. You can't continue to ask them to do more and tell them, "We're trying to find efficiencies so that we can put together a forty million dollar a year fund, so that we can invest in other people's jobs, and other people's employment, and bring other jobs to our region." And a couple of you have mentioned Centene. Well, Centene is in my district, which is not one of the areas that you're talking Natomas isn't, District One is not in the area that you guys are looking at, which is fine, but there's, you know, Centene is not going to show up with new money in our coffers this year, or next year, or probably not even the year after that. They have to hire some five thousand people, and then those people need to buy houses, and then they'll start to show up, potentially, in our general fund. So you're talking about an investment that we made two years ago, that we won't see until potentially four or five years out. So if you bond against that, you cannot expect that that revenue, and Centene is ideal, by the way, the idea that there's just a bunch of Centene's floating around out there, Fortune 100 companies, that are looking at Sacramento to headquarter, good luck. I worked on that for five years before you even got here, Mayor. That is very hard to do, hard to achieve. Two mayors, multiple community members, and a really good developer that led that all the way through. They don't just pop up every day. They don't. And if you have already spent the money on other things because you're anxious to do it, then when they do pop up, you won't have what you need to make it successful. And maybe, Councilmember Hanson, this, I'm Gen X, too. And, you know, this sandwich generation thing is so real. It feels like budgets and bad decisions reflect two categories of people. The forward-thinking about the millennials, and the backwards-thinking about the baby boomers. So thinking back about decisions baby boomers made before us, and thinking forward about what's going to be best for millennials, and there's an entire generation sandwiched in the middle there. And right now, that's how I feel about this, these people that are working for us now. There are people that work in the city of Sacramento that make a good living, but nobody is getting rich working for the city of Sacramento. And so this idea that somehow we could set aside the pension obligation, or not worry about that, or not worry about raises, or not include in the out-years any COLAs, or... Every contract we have with every union that we have is up in the next eighteen months. This budget doesn't account for giving them any increases based on their comparables. And yet, we know that pretty much every division we have in the city is paid below their comparables. There is a reason that recruitment in the academy for the Police Department is down sixty percent right now. Part of that is pay, part of that is desire to work in Sacramento. There's just a lot of issues, and we're going to need money to be able to address those concerns moving forward. So I'm looking forward to this discussion. I think it will be really good to look at this department by department as we go forward in the future weeks. I don't mind the audacious thinking, big thinking, but I just would ask this council to really consider the things that aren't necessarily in front of you right now, that you want to achieve. Because if you spend the money today, or you obligate the money today, or next week, or the week after, then when you might need it in a year or so, you won't have it. And you should think about, in the fifty-one million dollar conversation, the priorities of individual districts, and what they will get versus taking forty million out of that and committing it to future discussions on whatever's out there. I think that is extremely problematic.
Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to keep this fairly short. I want to talk a little bit about efficiencies, because I've been involved in those discussions. And Councilmember Ashby, or pro tem, alluded to the fact that we do have the same company as our consultant again. I can tell you that they had listed a couple of things. She talked about contracting out, but what she didn't mention was the two things that would bring the biggest return the quickest. And one is getting rid of binding arbitration. That requires a charter change. That is extremely explosive politically. It would take a tremendous amount of will by this council to pull that off. And what it means is that we could negotiate harder with labor unions without the threat of binding arbitration. That's a tough one. The second one that has come up, last report and this one, is doing emergency medical response in a different way, and I'm talking about single-role paramedics. Again, another very touchy subject, one that Councilmember Ashby and I have really wrangled with in the past, and may in the future. The efficiencies are not going to develop forty million dollars a year, Councilmember Carr, from everything that I've read and been in discussions about so far. We can save some money, and we should save some money, as much as we can. But what I don't want to get into is this. If we segregate forty million dollars annually and can't use that money to just pay our bills, what we're going to end up with is, again, the half-cent of the first Measure U being inadequate to pay our bills. And while we set aside all this money for inclusive economic development, we burn through our economic uncertainty reserve, and we start laying off people or reduce core services to balance our budget. There's just not enough money in the second half of Measure U to reach all of these lofty goals. There is, however, a certain amount by which we can do great things. We just have to be clever enough to sort out the difference. And I can tell you, as Councilmember Hanson pointed out, people forget, when you mortgage assets and you sell bonds, your payback is almost double the amount of money that you have to work with. If you lose sight of that, then you're just foolish. Debt service is a real thing, and as Councilmember Hanson also pointed out, decisions of previous councils put us in the economic situation that we are in now. Specifically, giving out pensions instead of higher wages to workers in previous decades has put us into a real conundrum as we try to pay post-employment benefits, which we don't have a clear path to pay off that debt, and also meet our calculators' obligations. So, again, I can stomach the idea of taking on some increment of debt, but segregating forty million dollars, as far as I can see, is just not tenable.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to make some comments, if I may, make some opening comments. I've listened to everyone carefully, and of course, the public. And this is not the beginning, and certainly not the end, of the debate and the discussion. So I want to give a little bit of perspective here, my own personal perspective, in terms of why I came back to City Hall in the first place, and the challenges we face both systemically and as a overall city. And first of all, I know this is a difficult conversation, but I would say to you, I think it is a great and healthy conversation. You see, I was the leader of an institution that had to actually cut billions of dollars of things that people really cared about. That was not fun. That was hard, necessary, and horrible work. We balanced the budget. It was one of the things I campaigned on when I decided to come back to City Hall, that I was the last leader standing from the beginning of that terrible recession in 2008 until I left in 2014. And so this is a much better debate for our city. Even though we have many challenges, this is about opportunity and how to... Excuse me? And how to best sustain what our people want, not just for one year, but for the many years ahead. I want to talk about the promise made in the systemic problem we have here, and everybody asks me about it, so we might as well put it out there and at least begin, not making any proposal, but here's really the problem. I ran for mayor in 2016 with a very specific agenda, and it was this agenda. And I won with fifty-nine percent of the vote. Some would call that a mandate. I come to City Hall, but I am obviously, with full knowledge, come into a system that has me as your mayor as one vote among nine. We all share the dais together, and by the way, I'm proud to share the dais with you all. You're all thoughtful people who work really hard on behalf of your constituents. But what does a promise mean? What does it mean when the mayor of a city, who is the only citywide elected official, one comes up with the idea to put forward a second-half cent? And then makes a series of very clear proposals around a vision to pass that second-half cent? And yes, victory has a thousand fathers and mothers, and yes, we have real obligations. But what does it mean, systemically, that the mayor proposed this and went out and campaigned on a specific set of ideas? To some members, it apparently means nothing, not to everyone, but to some, it apparently doesn't mean much. And so I have put out a strategy, and it may be, of course, it's imperfect. Number one, it's brand-new for this city, because we've never really thought this way before. And so a vision or a strategy can and should be criticized, should be, by the community, by the management, and by certainly the elected officials. But I would ask the harshest critics to at least try to answer the following. Number one, how are we going to grow the pie in this city? And number two, how long is too long to ask Del Paso Heights, Much of Oak Park, Meadowview, Leitata Floyd, and all the other areas of our city that have been promised an investment strategy, an economic development strategy, a strategy to uplift people, to educate and train young people for these modern jobs that we're creating? How long do the people who are being evicted from their rental units because of our severe housing shortage have to wait for us to actually put real money behind an affordable housing strategy? And I know we lost redevelopment. We can relitigate all that. That's not coming back. We're getting more help from the state now than we have before. But we need our own source of revenue. How long is it going to take? I know Angelique is not here. She took a break, that's fine. But I want to hear this. How long is it going to take for us to actually develop a childcare strategy, a capital strategy? Eric here has worked very, very hard on that. How do we help the struggling janitors who want upward mobility and can't get into the civil service or the public sector because there aren't enough jobs? That's a fair question. None of the debate around this dais, especially from those who are asking good questions and are skeptical, has even sought, has even sought to answer those sets of questions. Here is the trap that we are setting for ourselves if we don't do something like I am asking for. And it is this. Councilmember Harris worries rightfully about the city's fiscal condition. Without a growth strategy, that condition will only get worse. And here's why. We can afford the city manager's proposed investments to actually increase investments in police and fire, which on the merits, again, I support. But as I said two weeks ago, when you look at the math, and you add that pension obligation, which we must morally and legally uphold, and a conservative estimate of the cost of contracts, those services, those core services that we seek to increase, literally get wiped out. No code enforcement in Meadowview, Mr. Carr. You're worried about the red ink? I'm worried about the red ink, too, but I'm worried about a different form of red ink. I'm worried that we have no strategy and no ability to be able to grow the pie here. We can offer nothing but a couple hundred thousand dollars for youth programs in your district, a district that is great, and a set of neighborhoods that are great and have gotten a lot of attention. We can't offer small-business capital assistance to people who want to start small businesses in Meadowview. We can't offer a revitalization strategy for Mack Road, or for Stockton Boulevard, or for Del Paso Boulevard, because we've got no growth strategy. It gets eaten up by the debt, which we must pay. And so we throw around, I'm not asking for forty million dollars' worth of efficiencies, by the way. And I'm willing... way, and I'm willing to put, not just use Measure U money for this $40 million. I said I'm willing to fold in the Innovation and Growth Fund dollars. I'm willing to leave it to the city manager to figure this out. And yes, there may be red ink when that is produced in the short run. But where is the incentive to be more efficient? And it's not just contracting out. I've talked to management partners, and I don't know whether it's different today than it was nine or 10 years ago, but they're talking, they've told me that the city fills its vacancies at way-too-rapid a rate, and not just public safety vacancies. We've got an ethic around here that we've got to get back to where we were before the recession in terms of positions. No, we don't. We need to provide more opportunity for our people, and the government and the city ought to be the vehicle to help provide that opportunity. I will never suggest, because it would be bad policy, to ever suggest that we use capital resources, one-time money for ongoing program. That isn't the point. And what I'm calling for is a combination, a combination of capital and ongoing resources that people invest in your communities, in your communities, in your community, in your community, because what's your strategy for Northgate Boulevard revitalization? How long do all these commercial corridors have to wait before we actually go beyond the charrettes and the "wouldn't it be nice" and we actually invested some resources in the areas that people have long been demanding and asking for? I believe in Pago. There's nothing wrong with that in combination, but this idea that bonding is somehow a foreign strategy, at least the way that I hear it, I don't understand it. I, again, go back to what the state does for the water infrastructure, for transportation infrastructure. All I'm suggesting is that we have a capital fund to be able to invest in capital in our respective districts. I think that's sound. That's an economic builder. It's a job creator. And so if one's perspective on this debate, I say this to my friends, the firefighters and the police officers and Local 39 and everybody else, and this is where maybe I am, well, I came here with this particular vision, and I am sticking with it with pride. But maybe the difference is this: we could support the city manager's current budget because it's okay in the first year. I want to make sure that as you negotiate contracts in the year 2023 and 2024 and 2030, that there is a more robust economy and a tax base so that we can afford it. Because right now, this is one of those endless repeat loops that ends us up in a place where we can't promise anything to anybody. So I'm calling for a growth strategy. And yes, I'm calling for $40 million a year, but because we only do one budget at a time, I'm asking you to make a strong statement of intent, because next year, we do revisit that. So you've got plenty of outs. And with regard to the capital bonding, we do it $5 million at a time and make that decision as we go. And so I believe that what I'm putting forward, and what at least I think half of my colleagues, including me, support, is a better strategy to provide opportunity for people to invest in our neighborhoods and ultimately to be able to afford public safety services and other essential services that people rightfully want. And that's the debate here. And I think it's a healthy debate. I think it's a good debate. It just may be different. You know, think about it. Kevin Johnson, my predecessor, he was mostly known for the arena, right? And that was a tremendous accomplishment, by the way, a project that took a significant amount of public investment. But what he told me during our transition, and I'm paraphrasing, it wasn't a private conversation, I think you can share it, is that the thing he was most proud of was the establishment of the Innovation and Growth Fund. And he was able, at the time, to be able to cede that with $10 million. And we've done some good things with it. We've done the Rails Grants, we've done a creative economy pilot project. We've done a few things. But it is not enough for a sustained economic development strategy. What I offer here and what we offer here as a city is to be able to, yes, year by year, but to set a course that says we're going to put real resources into growing a modern, inclusive economy for all of our neighborhoods, bigger than we've ever done before, with every ability to cross-check ourselves year to year and along the way. And so we'll bring back the set of resolutions, and it may be a close vote in terms of the intent going forward. But I believe that this is the correct direction for our city because I ran citywide, won citywide, I won citywide on an agenda of economic opportunity for all of our neighborhoods. And I'm going to do my best, with all the limitations in the system and with the numbers and all that we deal with, to see that through. That's my promise, and that's my obligation, and I hope in the end I will have your support. City Manager, I think there's a lot of direction tonight's begin. You heard everybody, and you can put it all together, and we will talk.
So I think the direction has been pretty clear. I've heard from all the council members. I do have a clarifying question on the securitization piece. We're talking about 5 million tranches starting next year, and are we to model just three years or five years?
I'd like you to model both. I mean, it's just a matter of looking at more options. That's all it is. Just model both, please. It's a one-year-at-a-time decision, so there's no harm in.
But in terms of looking at the five-year forecast, we want to look at folding in the $40 million plus $5 million increments beginning next fiscal year.
I think, can I ask a question on that? I think it's 5 million starting in the out year, not in the budget year.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
So if you did a five-year forecast, it would have
Four years.
Four years of the 5 million.
Okay. That was my question.
That's fine.
Mayor, can I ask you a clarifying question?
Yes, please.
Is the work we're doing around homelessness and the other things we're funding, does that count towards your vision, or is that separate? Because you didn't address that piece, and I don't want to quibble, I just am curious.
No, it's part of a housing strategy, but I want you to remind me. I'm glad, because I forgot something. So the point's been made several times that somehow I'd be taking $40 million, put it in, I suppose, I put it in my own account, and that we'd leave $11 million for members. No, no, no. The $40 million is the council's money for council priorities, as determined by the council. I'm only asking that we set a direction that says we're going to invest this magnitude of money in growing a modern, inclusive economy, period. These are your projects, not my projects. I don't have any projects. I don't represent a district. I talk about Aggie Square. I talk about an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I talk about a lot of things as important examples. These are your projects to define, all 51 million, not, I'm just trying to set a direction here so that that money is not gobbled up by our obligations, our debt obligations, beginning in years two through five. That's the best way I can simplify it. And if you want to throw homelessness in there, which, again, is the problem that we hear about more than any other in our community, fine, throw it in. It's the money in the end, you can decide exactly how to direct. I'm looking to provide a statement of intention and a direction for the city management to begin working for and working towards.
So Mayor, I appreciate that. I think that's really helpful. Would you want to do a workshop on how projects are proposed?
Sure.
Because when you talk about an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I support that idea. I don't know what you mean, and I don't know what our capacity or targets are. And I think that's the kind of ambiguity that gives me pause, and hopefully, we can clarify, because if we clarify that, I'll feel more comfortable being supportive of the parts of the strategy that you outlined. But until we know more, it's really.
Tell me what you need exactly, and we'll try to meet.
But I think that's where a council workshop on what this, or something, where we can sit here together, because, like, again, and I'm not beating up on Jay, but last night, he presented to the RT Board his idea for $1 million a year. That didn't come through us, but apparently, it's in a list, I've seen on Howard's list of council priorities, but this council's never voted for it. So I don't know how to get a project proposed. I see Councilmember Shneer is very deft, but how do we do that? What is fair for Meadowview or Mack Road if you want to propose a project? How do you do it, Larry? Because often, you've expressed concern about how things come to us. So I think it would be helpful for us to understand that process.
I know that the city manager, you know, consistent with the Brown Act in a very legal way, talks to all the members to try to understand exactly what your priorities are. I hear through the wind, and I talk to as many of you as I can about what your projects are. I know Wind Park. I know Capital Mall West. I know Marina Vista Alder Grove. I know Land Park. I know many things. And I'm trying to figure out a long-term strategy so that we can accommodate as much that will allow us to grow as possible.
But in fairness, Mayor, usually, you've done a budget, well, Kevin Johnson started a budget memo process
Yeah.
that sort of tried to reconcile all these different things.
Yes.
And that process is unclear at this point in the budget-making cycle. And that's part of my question to you, is I don't know if you intend to do that again?
I think I would put out a budget, I think I would put out a memo in the next week and a half or so that would describe a list of potential projects, yeah, that we could fund in the near term. Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
I think that's helpful to understand what you're trying to do and how you're trying to do it, so we can weed through this.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. Good. Is there anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Let's hear from members of the public.
Council comments?
Council comments. Are there council comments? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a board and commission appointment to read into the record. We're appointing to the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission, Garcia, Castillo, Crigs.
Garcia.
Garcia.
Okay. Okay, council ideas and questions. Steve?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm in receipt of a letter, I believe, that everyone got from the County of Sacramento expressing their desire to withdraw from the Sacramento Regional Solid Waste Authority. And I believe that the members who serve on this probably know about it, but Mr. City Manager. Mr. City Manager, the county's withdrawal from the SWO by 2020, July 1st, I think has some significant implications for our solid waste department, and I'd like you to report back either through Jerome or through someone else what we need to do to effectuate the dissolution of the SWO, what our needs are as a city to pull through on their ordinances. A lot of the commercial haulers have impacts on my district, the ordinances at the SWO related to locking of dumpsters, what happens when dumpsters are unkempt, the penalties, all of that stuff, we probably have to create our own ordinances related to. And then also, it appears that there is some franchise revenue related to that that's pretty significant, and so I think we'll have to just figure out how to handle that.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes, Mr. Chair of the SWO.
Since I'm chairing the SWO now and since the recent action actually delayed it for 2022, we actually get 24 months, but what I think might be helpful
With the county resolution that we received, which says 2020.
It's incorrect, and they also have Donatoli voting for it, which he voted against it.
Okay.
So there's some clarifying issues with that. But what I think might be helpful is if we brought it back through law and ledge and had them break apart that, because there's also, at the SWO conversations, a potential for their staff to start looking at how it would bifurcate. Our city staff is involved, along with the county staff, so it might be best if we do it through the law and ledge process, because if we did, if the county did pull out, we'd have to go through that process anyways in developing a parallel ordinance.
This letter we received April 30th states their intention to withdraw as of July 1st, 2020, and you're telling me that that's incorrect?
That is incorrect, yeah. The actual motion was to go to 2022 and then report back every six weeks of whether they would withdraw. And so that, it's still up in the air.
Well, I would leave it to city staff to give us an off agenda memo on what the status is
Yeah.
and then to describe their process for resolving this, because it's a very significant issue, certainly in my district with all the multifamily properties and businesses, and I'm sure it is for others as well.
Right, yeah. And if you're okay with that, I think it'd be good to just calendar it for the law and ledge committee to have a conversation about that.
Yeah, I know some of it will be law and ledge, but I don't know how much of it, so I'll leave it to the staff to decide.
Councilman Carr.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City of Sacramento Youth Parks and Community Enrichment will be sponsoring a community appreciation and summer kickoff. It's going to be Wednesday, the 15th, that's tomorrow, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Sam and Bonnie Pinnell Community Center. There are going to be jump houses, food, carnival rides, local resources, raffle, and prizes. Come out and meet your community members, the center staff, local vendors, and resources such as Home Depot, Smud, Food for Less, Food Max, and many, many more. That's going to be tomorrow, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., Wednesday, May the 15th, at the Sam and Bonnie Pinnell Community Center, and admission is free. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think you're all aware of the severity of the Martin versus Boise decision, and that city is struggling about whether or not to appeal to the Supreme Court. I would like to ask the mayor-manager and all of my colleagues to support this council sending a letter to the city attorney in Boise and to their council, supporting the idea of them appealing the Martin versus Boise decision to the Supreme Court. So, Madam City Attorney, what's the mechanism to do that? Does that require a vote, or can the city manager just simply get the support of the council members' draft a letter and move it along?
Yeah, and I can work with the city manager to send that. And Councilmember, I actually have already reached out to the Boise city attorney and offered to fly two of our attorneys to his office to help him write any brief that he wants to file with the Supreme Court, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris? But one question at a time here. So there was a question from Councilmember Carr also about whether that comes back to council, but I think we discussed it in closed session. Is that correct, Madam City Attorney? All legal questions?
I'm sorry, on whether or not we do a support for Boise?
Correct.
I think that would fall within the framework of the legislative platform that we did, so I don't.
We often act on amicus without the council authority having authorized this because we have a legislative platform that's.
Yeah, I think that.
Yes.
Okay, a couple of announcements.
Tomorrow night, Wednesday, 5:15, is a community baseball game, SAC PD against the South Natomas Community. I look forward to that one. It's a softball game at Smythe Elementary, starts at 5:30 p.m. River Park Neighborhood Association meets this Thursday, 5:16, 7:30 p.m. at Fremont Presbyterian Church. Gardenland Northgate Neighborhood Association is having a Paint Day fundraiser on Sunday, 5:19, at 2:00 p.m. at the 524 Mexican Restaurant at the top of Northgate Boulevard. We hope to see you there. And we are having a community meeting in South Natomas on homelessness this Monday, 5:20, at 6:00 p.m. at the South Natomas Community Center, 2921 Truxell Road. 5:20, at 6:00 p.m. at the South Natomas Community Center, 2921 Truxell Road. I think this is going to be a very energetic discussion about homelessness and homeless impacts in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. District 7 is having office hours on Thursday, the 16th, at 6:00 p.m. It'll take place at the Robbie Wardis Library. Instead of always coming down here to City Hall, we encourage you to come into the community right there at the library and take all of your problems to us, and we will make sure we have someone there to address them. Trucks and Such will take place on Friday, May the 17th. It's going to take place at Garcha Bend Park from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's a wonderful opportunity to meet your neighbors and have a good meal in the process. And then on Saturday, we're going to do a park cleanup at Portuguese Park. Volunteers are going to spruce up the park, clean up the parkway trails, and do whatever kind of painting and cleaning up that we need to do. So you can contact my office for any three of these messages. We'd love to have you out there for one or all three events.
Great, thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Chenier?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Really briefly, we had a movie night scheduled for Friday night at Belle Coolidge Library. We are postponing that because of the weather, so please do not show up at Belle Coolidge Library Friday night for a movie, because there will be none. That's a good question.
That's right. Okay, well, thank you very much, Councilmember Chenier. And Councilmember, oh, before I get to District 6 announcements, do we have AB 1, 2, 3, 4 reports to do for, cap to cap? I'll, I'll ask Councilmember Harris to do for both Councilmember Hanson, after he chooses-
Mr. Vice Mayor, myself and a couple of colleagues did attend the cap-to-cap, adjourned to DC last week. I think it was a very productive week. We lobbied for projects across the board that benefit the city. Actually, Councilmember Jennings was the honorary chair of the excursion. I know Councilmember Carr was there, Councilmember Hanson was there as well. So consider that our report for AB 1, 2, 4, 1, 1, 2, 3, 4.
Report.
And the mayor.
And the mayor was there, well, very good.
One last thing I'd like to say. We stopped by the MLS Stadium, the DC United Stadium. It's a brand-new building in, in DC, and it has created tremendous economic development adjacent. It's a beautiful stadium, and ours is going to be even better.
That's right. Well, thank you very much, Councilmember Harris, for doing the AB 1, 2, 3, 4 report for Councilmember Jennings, Hanson, and our mayor. Yeah, Councilmember Carr, and Councilmember Carr?
Did you do it for me as well?
Yes, and we've duly noted, he's reported. All right, District 6 events, rain or shine, College Green food trucks are still going to happen, although we, well, we won't have beers and sack there, so you can pick up food to go if it's, if the thunderstorms are, are happening. The Third Annual Stockton Boulevard Cleanup Event on Saturday, that one's going to be a tough one, but we still got to clean it up. So we're, we're going to be out there at 9:00 a.m. Also, on May 24th, Tahoe Park's going to have their food truck event as well. And then save the date for this Wednesday, May 15th, at 6:30 p.m. The Fruit Ridge Manor Neighborhood Association is having their annual meeting on Stockton Boulevard. Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes our council comments. And now around to comments from the public?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have 10 speakers signed up for public comments matters not on the agenda. The first is Noah Davidson, then Laura Robinson, then Tom, then Sandra Fritz.
You mean Noah Davidson?
I think. So first of all, I think it's kind of rude that the mayor left right before the public is commenting. I think it says a lot about how much he cares about what we have to say. But I am here to talk about the cell antennas that are being installed throughout the Sacramento area as part of the 5G experiment. These antennas are being installed right outside children's windows, exposing them to high levels of radiation whenever they are home. There are hundreds of scientific peer-reviewed studies demonstrating negative health effects resulting from exposure to the radiation emitted by cell antennas. Many of these studies demonstrate negative health effects at exposure levels far below the FCC's limits for safe exposure. There are hundreds of scientists and doctors warning about the levels of radiation 5G will bring. I have submitted this information to the public record today. I've also submitted this information to Mayor Steinberg's office and Rick Jennings' office. I've been told nothing can be done about the situation, that we must accept this risk against our will. When I pressed for more information and requested a meeting, I was ignored. When I asked for evidence demonstrating these antennas near our homes would be safe, none was provided. You are the ones who signed us up for this experiment, and you are the ones who will be held to account if your constituents are harmed by these antennas. Shame on you for selling us out to the big, to the big telecom companies. Shame on you for ignoring us when our safety concerns are raised. Shame on you for allowing these companies to diminish our property values with their antennas. In my opinion, any of you who signed off on this experiment should be removed from office. I've created flyers for anyone who would like more information on this topic. They're in the back of the room. You can also speak to me directly. The people have to take action, because none of you are helping us.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Laura Robinson, then Tom.
Good evening.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Laura Robinson. I'm an emergency physician in South Sacramento, and I'm here in support of my EMS colleagues. I would like to propose some innovation around EMS transport to the hospital. It would be, I think, benefit to look into something innovative like diverting some ambulance calls to something like a medical Uber, or less specialized transport, instead of taking our crews off the street to care for the more seriously sick and injured patients. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your, submitting your comments. Next-
Speaker is Tom, then Sandra Fritz, then Mary Ann Gonzalez. Is Tom here?
Tom here.
I don't see Tom. Sandra Fritz?
Sandra, is Ms. Fritz here? Nope.
Mary Ann Gonzalez, then McWorthy.
Good evening.
Good evening. Vice Mayor and city council members, I'm representing today the CREATE District 6 Project as the community coordinator and advisory committee chair funded by, last year by the Creative Economy Grant. Our country's arts and cultural sector contributed over $763 billion to the American economy last, or in 2017. And according to the Creative Edge Plan, 90% of Sacramentoans consider arts and creativity as essentials and important to the Sacramento community for themselves, and for themselves personally. Given this information, Sacramento's District 6 CREATE Team and Advisory Committee asks our elected officials this question. Given the fact that art adds significant dollars to our economy and is important to the citizens of this city, is it important to you? If Sacramento wants to be a leader in innovation, our creative economy must be invested in. The CREATE Team and Advisory Committee, we, as of the CREATE Team and Advisory Committee, we strongly request that you adopt the proposed $2.2 million city arts budget requested by the Metropolitan Arts Commission for the Creative Edge Plan. The citizens of Sacramento not only deserve it, but have told you it is a priority to them. We respectfully ask that you ask the city manager, Howard Chan, to include the $2.2 million proposed by the Creative Edge Plan in full to the proposed upcoming budget. The funding of this, of this proposed budget is vital to Sacramento and all of District 6, when we talk about especially economic equity. And I have a letter, I don't know who to give it to, but it's-
Feel free to hand it to our assistant clerk.
It's signed by our advisory committee and our creative, our CREATE Team, CREATE District 6 Team also.
Great, thank you for your comments, Ms. Gonzalez Sims, and thank you for all bringing so much heart down to the, our southeast Sacramento.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is McWorthy, then William Halpern, then Noah.
Good evening, Mr. Worthy.
A little stiff, but. We got some situations here with housing authorities. You know, I heard stuff over at the county, I was over there on two stations, it's perfect, somebody better wake up here, what's going on in the house. And the director should have a meeting with the neighborhood and give us facts on some stuff. I'll try to get by there and plan that, because we didn't get some facts. And we, we look at, again, what, the fees to bill, have you all weighed in on that? To do constructions? Have you all weighed in on the pleasant, able to elk grow, to lift those houses to a different level? You know, this stuff should be talked about before people jump over there and buy those houses. Then we don't need a audit on S-Mud's money. Where is that money going? See, we, we got, we got too many non-profit organizations, and they don't come here and say a word, just like the budget. The budget was at Burbank, only more people from the city showed up than from the community. Somebody will let these people know what's going on. Come out there and explain to them, because this, down the road, and as I continue to tell you all, if you don't vote something back in, we're going to see a hell of a situation in this country, not only California. Now, I didn't make it to the, to the grand jury because of my sleeping condition and my age, and I turned that down, because that's something I wanted. I got the papers, and I went to my doctor and turned it, and I prefer not to be there and not stay awake, but I wanted to be on that, because some serious things coming up. We see some serious things happening in Washington, Department of Justice. Exactly what I said would happen, is happening to people. So how to educate the people in Sacramento what's going on?
Great, thank you for your comments, Mr. Worthy.
William Halpern is our next speaker, then Noah, then Kayla Scott, and Robert Copeland. Is William here? I don't see William. Following Noah is Kayla Scott, and then Robert Copeland.
Well, no. I guess I'm here as a Moorish American descendant of Moroccan, born in America. I'm not Negro, Black, African-American color, none of those non-degures that was placed on me. And I heard people in here talking about why we don't have this. I'm trying to figure out why y'all talking about a budget and a debt. Like, I would think this is a denotative platform, y'all speaking all these connotated linguistics, like, I don't know what's going on, y'all talking about paying for this and paying for that, I don't understand what's going on. I have trials set up, in about two weeks, I'm being violated. This land is under colonial occupation. I'm being violated left and right by these policies enforcers, they're not constitutional law enforcement officers, they're policies enforcers. And it's just, it's just crazy the different things, it's just crazy the different things that's going on in this community, as far as with the police and things like that. Where could I find the bonds for the judges and police officers?
Hold on, excuse me, sir, are you looking for legal aid?
No, I'm, I'm asking where, what building downtown do I go to find the bonds? Because every officer is bonded.
The bail bonds, ah, okay.
Ah, bail bonds.
Yeah, no?
No, like, a, a police officer takes an oath to oppose the Constitution, he also has a bond on file, so do the judges.
Well, here, I think I'm going to ask our, either our assistant city manager to maybe direct you to the right building. Yeah. 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 We'll, we'll find some after, after your comments, how to direct you to the correct building.
Okay, well, yeah, let's find that out, because I need that for my paperwork. But also, at the same time, like I said, this land is under colonial occupation. All our resources are being taken and used for people not like us, y'all talking about these communities, Oak Park and, and Del Paso and shit like that, I'm not even from Sacramento, but I could tell y'all not doing nothing, bruh. Like, period, y'all not doing nothing, y'all not helping nobody, y'all using this money to build these organizations, do whatever y'all doing, but then y'all controlling them. Y'all not in the community, y'all not doing nothing. What are y'all doing besides using the resources for yourselves? That's all I'm trying to figure out. This land is being colonized, y'all keep calling these people Black, African-American color, those are non-degures, those are not a nationality for a group of people. When y'all call them that, you are placing them outside the human family, they don't have no rights, civilly dead in the eyes of the law, period. I'm out of here.
Thank you for your comments.
And where, where could I find that, that information too?
We'll try to see if we can direct you to the right building here.
Next speaker is Kayla Scott. Following Kayla is Robert Copeland.
Good evening.
Good evening. Last time I came up here, I kind of bombed, so this is my redemption. My name is Kayla Scott. I live in District 6, but I work in District 3. And I wanted to ask that you guys promote more empathy towards the homeless in your districts. A lot of people vilify the homeless for doing drugs, and bringing up this fact doesn't resolve the problem. And for me, as a case manager, it hinders my ability to rehouse my clients, because the stigma makes it difficult for me to be able to rehouse them. It doesn't matter whether or not they're drug addicts. And if, if anything, we need to ask, why is there such a heavy drug addiction population in Sacramento? What's this demand for drug addiction, or drugs? They have a utility, and so the only way we can get rid of drug addiction is to address why so many people want to use these intoxicants in Sacramento. These people are killing themselves on purpose, because their quality of life sucks. Their drug addiction is inconvenient for the residents of Sacramento, but their quality of life and the high cost of living is an inconvenience for them. So it creates a utility to numb that pain that they're experiencing while they're in the streets of Sacramento. It doesn't help when they have to deal with the rejection of their community. And I appreciate you, Mr. Chenier, because you are a model of empathy, and I would like for everybody else to kind of embody that persona as you guys talk to your community, because it doesn't help me as a case manager when there's a stigma about homelessness because of this misconception about drug addiction. And there was one other thing that I wanted to mention, but I completely forgot. I think when it comes to re-acclimating these people back into the community, the only way that we can do it is if we embrace them. So even just praying for them is better than vilifying them, because they're coping with their mental illness and their circumstances. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Our final speaker is Robert Copeland.
Mr. Copeland.
Well, I'm going to ask the Sacramento Tendency and the Sacramento Homes Organized Committee to watch what you do on Martin versus Boise, because if you want to support a repeal of that, we're going to come down and talk to you. Because Martin versus Boise should stand as law. And as far as all you, all you city council members trying to help out your communities, when are you going to start? I ask you, last year, early last year, what are you going to do to better your community for all residents? And I have not heard a word from any of you, except for Mayor Steinberg. What he wants to, somehow what he wants to do? I haven't heard from my city council member, what he wants to do with the, on homeless, housing, jobs? So what are you, what, each of them, what are you going to do? If we get more housing, that'll lower rent, which probably bring in more jobs, which means more tax revenue, but I don't hear none of you, I hear silence from all of you. I think you should be ashamed of yourself for not helping out all your residents in each of your districts. I mean, really. I've been asking this since Mayor Johnson was the mayor, and I'm hearing crickets, nothing. Get on the bus, or, or get out of here. I know two people are going to run against my city council member, and I hope either one of those two wins. And I live in District 4, by the way, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. That's our, concludes our public speaking for the night, and we are adjourned at 8:50 p.m.